Well, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the second half of our Board of Supervisors meeting. I would like to make sure that we have all of our board members on the meeting. So I'll just call off your names. Vice Chair Fowler?
I am present. Thank you so much. Hi, everyone.
Excellent. Supervisor Babett?
Present.
Great. Supervisor Ryan? Okay. Supervisor Parks?
Present.
Okay. And I do see Supervisor Ryan on the line. And so he may just need to unmute to be able to say "present." Supervisor Ryan?
Yes, I decided not to transplant the oak tree, and so I came back to the meeting.
Okay. Excellent. Well, thank you very much. And members of the public, welcome to our live Board of Supervisors meeting. This afternoon, we have a presentation and discussion regarding the upcoming fiscal year 2021 budget. This is actually the sixth session that we've had. And this is six of six. So this is our final session in terms of these presentations. And of course, we'll move forward with budget hearings. Although I think after we have some discussion today, we probably will bring it back for additional work sessions. This will be a briefing that will include information on unemployment, a financial update, information on revenues and expenditures for FY 2021, review of our 10-year plan scenarios, and a review of budget recommendations. Just so you are reminded, go ahead and mute your phones or your electronic devices. And while you're on this meeting, you can go ahead and mute your team's meeting or mute your phone. If you have a comment or would like to ask a question, then there will be a time for that after the presentation. So I'd like to turn it over. I know we have Megan, who will be presenting this, our interim finance director. But I do want to see if County Manager Jimmy Jane wanted to make any comments prior to Megan. And I know that he'll be involved in the presentation. But Jimmy, let me turn it to you to see if you have anything that you'd like to say prior to me handing the meeting over to Megan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, county leadership, and others participating in this meeting today, I appreciate the opportunity to provide some introductory comments to our budget discussion that we'll have this afternoon. Madam Chair, as you mentioned, today is the sixth presentation of the board on the county budget for FY 20 and FY 21. As you all are aware, today looks very different than what we were expecting two months ago. We expect today to lead into three additional half-day discussions with the board, starting next Tuesday afternoon, May 5th, and then May 12th and 13th as well. Due to our statutory guidelines and timelines, the tentative budget adoption is set for June 2nd, with final budget adoption on June 23rd. Since the board's last discussion, we have had robust conversations with other organizations to help understand what they are predicting for revenue. And as you have already heard, the City of Page and Williams have separated service with some of their team members, and the City of Flagstaff has furloughed employees. One of our main challenges continues to be that we have not received any state shared sales tax numbers for the month of March. We received our local numbers for FY 20 for March, and they are still up 6% year-over-year over FY 19. The Joint Legislative Budget Committee, or JLBC, has projected a 31% decrease in sales tax revenues for the fourth quarter of FY 20.
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice messaging system. Nine, two.
JLBC is projecting a $638 million deficit for FY 20 and would roll this deficit over to FY 21. This would leave the FY 21 state budget shortfall at about $1.1 billion with a B. As you will hear from interim finance director Megan Cunningham, the budget team is working, is currently working on numbers that would replicate this 31% decrease in state shared sales tax as estimated by JLBC for the remainder of FY 20. We are plugging in a 38% decrease in local sales tax for FY 20. Some other highlights. This decrease in state shared sales tax would put the county about $2 million below budget in state shared revenue. It's important to know that the county state shared sales tax revenue is not necessarily based on the point-of-sale, but more influenced by assessed valuations. Our current unknown is FY 21 and the length of financial impact we will see from COVID-19. The budget team has put together three scenarios that will be presented to you today, which include a deep recession, a long recovery model, and a quick recession. So addressing this locally. Coconino County has a strong foundation and has managed through difficult times before. And we plan to manage in partnership with the board, our elected officials, and our department directors, and our team members across our organization. As of last week, we have put in place a review of all vacancy and reclassification requests. No organization has a hiring freeze. Rather, this is an opportunity to work with departments on their most immediate needs with protecting our current team members as a top priority. Our current team members that have once again gone above and beyond during this crisis. I want to make sure the county can achieve our mission to serve people and community. We will be encouraging employees to use the personal day purchase program. I'm also asking departments to review discretionary spending, including travel. This will also include exploring opportunities to continue to utilize remote and virtual training throughout the organization. And Erica Philpott and the HR team, as we've talked about before, are doing a great job in exploring those opportunities and working with departments. We are reviewing grant-funded positions and the possibility of those individuals reducing their hours on those grants. We will be challenged to backfield grant positions with general fund revenue. Where are we at on advocacy? We will continue, as an organization, to work on the state and federal levels for reimbursement for COVID-19 expenses. We continue to work on the state level advocating for the governor, to the governor, for a portion of the CARES Act funding. I know our CARES, our COVID-19 task force chaired by Eric Peterson and Joanne Keen are working with representatives from throughout our organization focused on that. And that we are ready to respond to funding requests moving forward. I want to say thank you to the board and other elected officials and our departments for your continued work to advocate at the state and federal level during this uncertain time. So ask of the board today, Madam Chair and members. Today, we're asking for your input on the following. Input on the revenue modeling scenarios that you will see today, presented by Megan Cunningham and our budget team. Input on the assumptions included in the 10-year plan. Input on critical funding issues, or SIRs, submitted by departments. And your input on the use of flexibility language. So, Madam Chair, members, I would like to turn the time over to interim director Megan Cunningham. But before, Madam Chair, you do, I would like to thank Megan for her leadership and the budget team. John Comer and Megan Coons and our DCMs, Joanne Keen, Marie Peoples, Lucinda Adriani, for their creativeness and their partnership, working during this uncertain time. I also want to, Madam Chair, finally say thank you to all of our other elected officials and department directors for working in partnership with our budget team, myself and the DCMs, that we will get through this together and find creative solutions to live within the revenues that we are anticipating. So, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jimmy. And yes, we echo our thanks to the entire budget team, led by Megan, for the work that's gone into preparing this presentation and the five presentations prior to this, as well as what is yet to come, which we will see in this presentation. And as you've outlined, will be challenging for our organization. So, Megan, go ahead. Thank you very much for spending the afternoon with us.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Thank you for having me. I'm going to go ahead and share the presentation for everybody. Let me know if everybody can see it, please.
Megan, the presentation is now live.
It's not live. Everybody has it, though?
It is live. Yes, go ahead.
Oh, okay.
We can see it on the screen. And if you put it in a slideshow format that you're doing right now, that'll be great. Yeah. Excellent.
You see the slides? Gotcha.
All right. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Megan Cunningham, interim finance director. Today, we are here, as County Manager Jane said, for our sixth discussion in our series of fiscal year 2021 budget discussions. And the goal of these discussions is for the board to have the necessary information to make the best decisions for Coconino County. Today's discussion will include information on the budget process and timeline moving forward. We will share information we have on the current landscape to include unemployment, social service needs, and revenue. We will discuss revenue modeling and 10-year plan scenarios. For fiscal year 21, we will talk about expenditures and critical funding issues, as well as opportunities to address expected significant decline in revenues. Slide 3 shows us where we are on the always-evolving roadmap guiding us into adopting an FY 21 budget. The week of May 11th, we are looking at scheduling time with the Board of Supervisors for final budget discussions. The tentative budget adoption is June 2nd, with the final adoption on June 23rd. And we will be coming back to the board on August 4th to adopt the tax rates. So talking about the current landscape. Slide 5 shows what we are seeing from the impacts of COVID-19 on unemployment in Coconino County. These are the number of claims by week. You can see that the week of March 14th, 2020, Coconino saw 38 claims, which is in line with the prior weeks. Then the week of March 21st, 2020, things started to increase, starting with 569 claims that week, and then hitting the thousands for the next three weeks. So the last report on 4/11/2020, we had 1,078 claims. So that was a decrease from the two weeks prior, but it's still much higher than what our normal range is. On slide 6, this shows the percentage change, percentage change week over week. You can see the large increase that began the week of 3/21, with a 139% increase, or 30, yeah, 139% increase. And then the week following increased by 199%.
I think it's 1,000%, 1,300% increase.
Is it like that slide's? Yeah, I think you're right. 1,397%. It's small. Good eye. So putting this in-
Supervisor Babett.
Yes, thank you. So putting this into a visual, here is the visual of the number of employment claims for Coconino County. Between the weeks of April 3rd, 2020, and April 10th, 2020, Coconino County saw the first decline in claims since the start of the pandemic. Weekly claims are more than 2,730% higher than one month ago. Slide 8 shows the comparison of unemployment in 2019 to 2020. You can see that 2019 stayed before, below 35 claims the entire year, whereas, or during this time period. The scale for 2020 is much higher, and the spike started the third week of March. So you can see that's where the spike started here. What else are we seeing? Coconino County is seeing major impacts in social service needs. A few examples. County rental assistance applications are very, very high. I spoke with Mike Oxtabi today via email, and he let me know that the last of the money we have will be expended today, but that the requests have seemed to decrease slightly. The Flagstaff Family Food Center is seeing an over 50% increase in demand for all services. St. Mary's Food Bank has seen a tripling of demand. An individual seeking a bed at the Flagstaff Shelter has more than doubled. And also, individuals seeking foreclosure prevention services from Housing Solutions has quadrupled. So you can see these impacts on the community and on our resources here at Coconino County. So that takes us into talking about the revenues. And on slide 11, we have the year-to-date local sales taxes. And so for local sales taxes, we have nine months of data. Through March, Coconino County saw 6.93% increase in local sales taxes in comparison to the same time in 2019. We anticipate to see the April revenue data by May 11th. Moving on to state shared sales taxes. We have eight months of data. Through February, Coconino County saw an 8.95% increase in state shared sales tax in comparison to the same time in 2019. We anticipate to see the March revenues by May 11th. And as County Manager Jane mentioned, this is one of the points that's been hard to determine our impacts, is the lag in the sales tax reporting and what we're seeing. So we haven't been able to see the true impact in our sales tax yet. So looking at the fiscal year 20 estimated local sales tax projection. In the April Finance Committee meeting, the JLBC, which is the Joint Legislative Budget Committee, projected certain changes to sales tax revenue by category, resulting in a statewide revenue decrease of 31% across all categories. And when we say categories, that's retail, contracting, restaurants, bars, utilities, and hotels. What we did was we applied the changes by category to our original fiscal year 20 revenue budget to see if Coconino County would experience the same 31% decrease in the local sales taxes. We found that because Coconino County's economic mix is more heavily weighted to restaurants and bars and lodging, we will likely see a 38% decrease in local sales taxes for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 20. Using this projection, fiscal year 20's local sales taxes are estimated to come in 5.94% under budget, which equates to about $983,775 less than we budgeted. And this projection shows that local sales tax revenues would be coming in 4.7% under fiscal year 19 revenues. So this is the projection that we used going into the 10-year plan scenarios for local sales taxes. Slide 14 shows the projection for fiscal year state shared sales tax revenue. For this revenue, we used the JLBC projection that resulted in the statewide revenue decrease of 31%. And this is the 31% that County Manager Jane mentioned in his opening comments. This percentage could vary for counties, as the state's shared sales tax distribution formula uses population and point-of-sale or assessed valuation, whichever is higher. Because our assessed valuation tends to stay higher than the rest of the state, we tend to benefit from the calculation, because they use the assessed valuation for our portion. And we usually see higher sales tax revenue than anticipated in these types of downturns. So the 31% is a projected estimate for a decrease in the fourth quarter. Looking at primary property taxes, slide 15 shows all of the primary property tax rates for the 15 counties in Arizona. As you can see, Coconino County has the lowest tax rate in the state. This has been an ongoing trend since legislative actions locked in a base year and only allowed an increase of 2% plus new construction annually. And when they locked in that base rate, Coconino County, we had been very conservative, and we had a very low rate at that time. So we got locked in at a very low rate, and we continue to be the lowest property tax rate in the state. So every year, for budget and tax purposes, the Department of Revenue sends each taxing jurisdiction a levy limit worksheet. And what this levy limit worksheet provides is the assessed value, as well as the rate that we can set without having a TNT hearing, and the rate that we could set, which would require a TNT hearing. A TNT hearing is a statutory requirement. It's where a public hearing is held, when the tax levy for the new fiscal year will be higher than what was levied the prior year. So looking at the slide at the top, for Coconino County, no TNT hearing is required with a tax rate of 5, or .5189, which would levy $10,013,338.43. Any increase over the levy from fiscal 20 would be attributed to new construction. Coconino County could also choose to increase by the statutory 2% plus new construction with a rate of .5293, which would levy $10,214,029.74. A TNT public hearing would be required in order to levy the 2% plus new construction levy amount. The difference between the two rates and the levies is $200,691.31. So how would that impact a taxpayer? Let's look at that on this slide. Levies would have, this slide shows that a property in fiscal year 20 valued at $300,000 would pay $162.39. So that's for fiscal year 20. Assessed values grew 5.39% between fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. That's the assessed values up here at the top. So 5.39%. So a house that was valued at $300,000 in fiscal year 20 would be valued at $316,170 in fiscal year 21. So if we were to use the tax rate that is just new construction and does not require TNT hearing, the tax collected would be $164.06, which would be a $1.67 impact to the taxpayer. Looking at that same residence, using the higher rate of .5293, the tax would be $167.35, which would be a $4.96 increase to the taxpayer. And this is where, and the TNT hearing would be required. Moving on to slide 18. This is the 2% levy growth chart that we've seen in the past. This shows the annual and cumulative impact of primary property tax revenues for Coconino County. So annually, the increase of 2% plus new construction levy is about $200,000. So you can see, if we started back in fiscal year 10, if we did the 2%, we'd have $200,000 additional income for the county. And then each year, it is cumulative, growing to, looking at fiscal year 20, we did the 2% plus new construction. So over the past 10 years, we've brought in additional revenue of $13,200,000. Moving on to secondary property taxes. Slide 18 shows the districts that are funded by secondary property taxes for each county. Some counties do have other special districts, but they are funded by a sales tax rather than property taxes. So these are just the secondary districts that are the districts, special districts, that are funded by a secondary property tax.
Megan?
Yes.
Madam Chair, quick question?
Go ahead, Supervisor Babett.
So jail. So we have flood control, rate, library district, rate, public health, jail district.
Jail district is a sales tax. So these are just property taxes.
Right. Okay. And so the other question on, okay, thanks for, so this is just on the property side. On the last question about the primary and the incremental across, go back to one more slide, please. Thank you. Yeah. So the 496, so is that just, that is, that is the total amount of the 2%, correct, across any and all prime, that is only on the primary, that's not in the secondary?
That is correct.
Okay. So that is limited.
This is just the primary.
Okay. Great. I just want to make sure there's no other secondary implications to this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would, please mute your phones or your computers. That would be helpful to us. Otherwise, we're hearing information in the background, and we're privy to your conversations, which I don't think you'd like for us to be. Thank you.
And then, so are all jail districts across the state? This is an informational one. Are they all sales tax funded?
I believe so. I dug this information out of CSA, and it listed all property taxes. And then the sales taxes are listed as well. So if one of these counties had a jail district that was property tax, it would be on this list.
Okay. So I was just surprised to see no counties have a jail district. But I don't know, that may be set up in statute. Another conversation for another day. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
If I can comment, this is Matt Ryan. So, and I'm not, not all counties have jail districts, I believe. You could correct me if I'm wrong on that. Yalapai, because they were not able to push a jail district special district tax, went for a different type of property tax levy for it. So I'm not sure how they defined it, but it might beg the question of if they're listing it as a jail district or not on that. So it's, it's not all sales tax. It depends on which county, whether they have it or not. Otherwise, it goes to their, just their regular funding mechanisms under the general fund.
Okay. And I can take a look at that, too, and see what they're, how they're levying that. Any more questions on this slide?
Go ahead, Megan.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to slide 20. This is the same type of chart that we showed for primary property taxes, but this is the secondary property tax. And in looking at these, you can see that Coconino County does have a higher combined tax rate than many counties. So if we add all of our secondary tax rates together, we get .7336. So we are higher up there when you look at all of the counties and their rates. But taking that into consideration, looking at the combined primary property tax rate with the secondary property tax rates, you can see that Coconino County is the third lowest between these, taking all of these rates into consideration. And you can see that the Coconino bar is larger in the blue, which is the secondary rates, and much smaller in the green, which is the primary property tax rate. So we're still at the bottom spectrum of things when we look at property taxes, whether they be primary or secondary. Okay. More funding that we receive here at the county is secure rural schools and roads. So we had a two-year reauthorization in fiscal year 2019. And we received the funds later in the year of fiscal year 19. So to explain, the Title I distributions did take place in fiscal year 19. So these funds were given to the roads and schools and super tene, in fiscal year 19. Because it was so late in the year, the Title III funds had to be programmed for fiscal year 20. So that's why we have fiscal year 20 here up at the top. So as you can see, the purse, let's see, I have a total here. So we received a total of $2.6 million. Right off the bat, and we don't receive this, but Title II funding goes to the RAC, the Resource Advisory Committee. So $214,943 went to the RAC, and that's 8% of our distribution. And then 7% of Title III was $188,075. So that went to the county's Title III projects. To just note these, kind of a note on these percentages. So these percentages were designated by the board years ago. And then when we did, when SRS funding- And then when we did, when SRS funding was not reauthorized, you know, and we had some years where it wasn't going on, well, when it got reauthorized, we were directed to just continue to use the same distribution that we had adopted the last time that it was authorized. So we're still at the 8% for Title II and 7% for Title III. And that 7% is the max that we can allocate to Title III. So after taking the Title II and the Title III out, the remaining balance for Title I is $2,283,765. And that will be distributed this, the way that we're listed at the bottom. So 500,000 went to the superintendent of schools for their office. And then the, what was remaining, the remaining balance, 25%, which is 445,941, went to the roads, which was a 25% distribution of the final balance. And then the 75% that was left over, the 1.3 million, went to the schools for distribution out to the school districts.
Madam Chair. Actually.
Go ahead Supervisor Ryan.
Yeah. And just to note on that, part of the decision, we used to have schools at 50% and roads at 50%. Part of that decision was affected by Proposition 403. When we got the funding to be able to do the road tax, we pulled back and run our distribution for schools, knowing the needs that they had.
That is correct.
Okay. Go ahead Megan. Thank you.
Slide 23. This shows that Title III allocation summary for the funds that we received. So Title III dollars can only be designated for specific uses. They can be used to carry out activities under firewise community programs. They can be used to reimburse participating county for search and rescue and other emergency services, including firefighting and law enforcement patrols. It can be used to cover training costs and equipment purchases directly related to the emergency services I just described for firefighting, law enforcement, patrol, search and rescue. Or number four, they can, the funds can be used to develop and carry out community wildfire protection plans. The use of Title III funds are posted for public comment and then adopted by the Board of Supervisors. So we determine through our budget process what these funds are going to be used for. We post for a 45-day comment period and then we bring back to the Board for adoption. So we can't change what these dollars are allocated to later in the year. We have to use it for what we, what we adopted. So you can see that for fiscal year 20, we used $90,276 for our Flagstaff Patrol and we used $97,799 for search and rescue. So these offset the costs for Flagstaff Patrol and search and rescue on federal lands. So we have another year of authorization. So we're looking at, we haven't received the funding yet, but it is estimated to total 2.2 million, $575,471. 8% of that would be $206,038. That would go to the RAC. 180,283 would be our allocation for Title III. The remaining balance is the 2.1 million. Again, 500,000 would come off of the top of that to fund the Superintendent of Schools office. And then we're using the same distribution as the prior year of 25% of the remaining balance to roads and 75% to schools. So roads would get 422,000 and schools would get 1.2 million to distribute out to the school districts. If we're to continue the same type of allocation and we chose to allocate to Flagstaff Patrol and Search and Rescue, we have this based on a percentage. 86,536 would go to Flagstaff Patrol and the remaining 93,747 would go to Search and Rescue. Are there any questions on the secure rural schools and roads funding?
Any questions at this time on secure rural schools and funding? Okay. Go ahead Megan.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to go into revenue modeling. So this has been an interesting year to say the least. Beginning with no other data, the budget team initially used revenue decline and recovery rates from the last recession. Now that many other organizations have begun publishing their projections, we opted to abandon the historical data and focus instead on professional opinions from trusted sources. So we had some criteria for the source that we wanted to mirror. And these criteria, the first one was for them to be unbiased. So too many sources seem to have ulterior motives to their projections. We looked for sources that didn't seem to be selling their book. We also looked for data-driven. Many projections had simple pronouncements with no supporting data. We looked for sources with defined process in place to calculate their results. And the final criteria for the source was to be comprehensive. Because we use a 10-year plan, we were most interested in sources using multi-year projections. We chose, at the end of it all and the looking through everything, we chose to model Deloitte, which is one of the big four accounting organizations and the largest professional network in the world. Deloitte modeled three scenarios. They modeled a quick recession, which is the closest to an economic pause where the recession is quick and ends with a powerful recovery. A deep recession crisis model that is much deeper, a much deeper recession and recovery is strong, but begins six months later than the quick recession. And then we looked at the long recession model, which shows a much more serious downturn with a week-long lasting recovery similar to the Great Recession. So looking at the quick recessionary model. What this includes, this includes a massive decline in the end of fiscal year 20. And this is that 38% decline in local sales tax for the fourth quarter and the 31% decline in state shared sales tax for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2020. Recovery begins in the second half of fiscal year 21 with strong recovery in fiscal year 22 and fiscal year 23, tapering off moving forward. We plugged the growth rates into our local sales tax trend chart to show the drop in fiscal year 20 and then the stronger recovery moving forward, which gets us back up to that trend line in a quicker fashion. So that's the, the local sales tax. We also plugged that into the state shared sales tax revenue. And so again, we have the drop down with a pretty speedy recovery back up to the trend line. The next model is the deep recession model. And this begins with this, with the same as the quick recession, with the massive decline at the end of fiscal year 20. And with the deep recession crisis model, this decline continues through fiscal year 21. Recovery begins in the first half of fiscal year 22 with strong recovery and fiscal year 23 tapering off moving forward. And again, plugging these into our trend charts for, this is the local sales tax. So you can see it goes down and it stays lower a little bit longer. And then we have some stronger growth and then we just taper out. Same thing for the state shared sales tax revenue. We go down deeper, coming back up slower, but then we eventually taper out within the 10-year period. The final model is the long recovery model. Similar to the deep recession, the massive decline at the end of fiscal year 20 continues through fiscal year 21 and recovery doesn't begin until the second half of fiscal year 22. And then the recovery is very weak until fiscal year 26. So plugging this into our trend chart for local sales tax, you can see we, we go down, we stay down and we just really don't have a, a big pull of, of strong recovery at any point. It's pretty weak and you can see by fiscal year 28, we're not even quite to the trend line yet. And same for the long model for the state shared sales tax. We, we go down further and we stay down longer with a very weak recovery. Are there any questions on, on the revenue models to this, at this point?
Let me see. Members of the Board, do you have any questions at this time on the revenue models? Okay. None at this time, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Go forward. Thank you.
All right. Before we look at the 10-year plans, let's go over the assumptions for the plans. These are the same for all of the, the plans with the only differences in each plan being the sales tax growth rates. So depending on whether it's a quick recovery, a deep recession, or the long recession, the sales tax growth declines or rates will be different. So looking at all of the assumptions in the 10-year plans, and these are listed at the bottom of each 10-year plan. Number one, we have vacancy savings. And so we have evaluated this number annually. And this year, we changed this assumption to 1 million from 700,000. Trends show that we come in each year well over 1 million in vacancy savings. Number two, additional vacancy savings. We have added this assumption in light of COVID impacts to our vacancies. We will have review of vacancies and this will result in more positions remaining vacant, resulting in additional vacancy savings. And we looked at the data as of right now, what vacancies do we have and what number are we comfortable with? So we were looking at what we have, we're comfortable with an additional 1.5 million in vacancy savings. That will taper off in the next years of the 10-year plan as recovery begins. Number three is the base adjustment. So this is the assumption of compensation plan for each year. And at this time in the 10-year plans, this is projected at 0% for fiscal year 21 through fiscal year 28. Number four, operations and travel increases. This is an annual inflation increase of 1% for operations and travel that we have in the 10-year plan and we've historically had it in the 10-year plan. Number five, capital facilities fund. So this assumption is a transfer from the general fund into the capital facilities fund to pay debt service for the King Street facility bond. The transfer is in the amount of 675,000. These funds are savings we are recognizing from the paydown of the public safety pension. The transfer of these funds are planned to begin in fiscal year 23 to be in line with the project timeline. Number six, this assumption is also related to the King Street Facility Bond debt service payment. During the fiscal year 19 budget, the Board set aside funds in the amount of 405,505 to go towards capital facilities. This will supplement the 675,000 from the previous slide to pay the annual debt service payment once the bond is issued. Number seven, facilities financing. This is part three of three. This is additional funding needed to make the full debt service payment for the bond. The debt service payment increases in the outer years of the 10-year plan and more general fund dollars will be needed to add to the 675,000 and the 405,000 to make the full debt service payment. So five, six, and seven are all related to the debt service payment for the King Street facility. Assumption number eight, this is PHSD transfer for mandates. And this is a transfer from the general fund to the Public Health Services District Funding Source to pay increasing mandated costs. Examples, Altex, Access, and such. For fiscal year 21, this is estimated to be 400,953. And this number could change based on what the actuals come in and what fund balance looks like at the end of fiscal year 20. And then you can see that this amount increases substantially going forward and that's due to the increases that we are anticipating for these mandates. Number nine, potential judge salary increase. This is a legislative change that is being discussed. If it is approved, it will begin in fiscal year 21 and cost approximately 215,318. Number 10, tax settlement. 1 million was set aside in the FY '20 budget for the transwestern tax settlement and this will be carried forward into fiscal year 21, as we did not use it in '20. Assumption 11, employee stimulus one time. So this sets aside 550,000 in fiscal year 21 and then 550,000 in fiscal year 22 to assist in employee increases in medical and retirement. Number 12, flexibility language. For fiscal year 21, we are, we were again given the authority to use special district funds for other expenditure needs. The approved amount is 1.25 million. 250,000 is allocated in the 10-year plans to the Sheriff's Department for Technology Needs. And then the remaining 1 million is also included in all of the 10-year plan scenarios. Number 13 is local sales tax. So this line just shows the projected sales tax decline or growth for fiscal year 21 through 28. And these are the growth rates that we have from our quick and our deep recession and the long recession. And then 14 is the same, but it's for state shared sales tax revenue. So this is the projected sales tax decline or growth for fiscal year 21 through 28. 15 is the COVID-19 response that we took out of emergency reserve. So the estimate at this time is a total of $4 million between fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. Number 16, that's the state federal reimbursement. So at the estimate at this time is that we will recover 75% of our expenditures for COVID-19 to receive 3 million in fiscal year 21. Obviously, these are, these are estimates and we will have better numbers as things go along and we see what is going on with the reimbursement process. And the timing could also be different. We could be receiving reimbursements well past fiscal year 22, depending on, on how everything works out. So this is just a, an estimate placed in the 10-year plans for now. Okay. Looking at the quick recessionary model 10-year plan. It's really small on the slide, but I do believe you all have the larger papers. And we'd be looking at the one.
We do.
Okay. We would be looking at the one that says quick recessionary model at the top. So the quick recessionary model keeps a positive overall fund balance throughout the 10-year plan, although unreserved general fund balance goes into the negative in fiscal year 22, 23, and 24. And what that means is that we are going into the revenue smoothing emergency reserve to make that, to make things balance and make things work for that fiscal year. So we would be dipping into our emergency reserve or revenue smoothing during that time. Deep recession crisis model. It says it at the very top. So this model also keeps a positive fund balance throughout the plan. But the unreserved general fund is again negative in fiscal year 22, 23, and 24. And we would be dipping into the revenue smoothing emergency reserve to get through those years as well. So the long recovery model is the most dire. And this plan puts us into a fund balance deficit starting in fiscal year 23 moving forward and we don't dig out of it. So this is obviously the most worst-case scenario. And we would definitely have to do some planning moving forward to figure out how we could continue to balance. And I also think that you received, did you receive three more 10-year plans that have the, that's with the recommendations?
They did not Megan.
Okay. All right.
We'll bring those back on May 5th.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. All right. So that's kind of the overview of the 10-year plans and the assumptions. Are there any questions that want to be asked right now? Okay. Well, we'll go on with expenditures. So slide 53 includes detail on each medical plan and the cost increase for each plan for the employee and the employer. And to note, dependent healthcare is currently subsidized by 55% of the actual cost. So the county pays for 55% of the cost of dependent healthcare. The one to really look at is down here, the family base. The one to really look at is down here, the family base, if we want to look at the base plan. So you can see that for the employee, there are 226 employees that have the family base plan. The employees' amount increases by $293 for fiscal year 21. Oops, sorry. And then if you look across, the employer's increase for each of those plans is $799. So it's going up on either side. I do have additional information. So for the high deductible plans, I do have the information by grade that I can email out in a better format than I have right in front of me right now. So we do have it by grade, each of these plans, so we can send that information out. But you can see if we, total employee cost, if we were to make the family base employees whole, it would be $66,281. The health impact, so Slide 54 shows the impact to a $40,000 employee. This would be the same impact to an $80,000 employee or a $35,000 employee in regards to medical, if they have the dependent base. It would be an increase of $294. Retirement changes. So this slide shows the changes in employee and employer retirement rates between fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. The only plan that has a negative impact to employees is ASRS with a .11 increase to employees and to the employer. You can see for employee portion, elected stays the same at 7%. Corp actually decreases from 8.41 to 8.07. Corp AOC stays the same, as well as Sheriff Public Safety Retirement. Slide 56 shows the dollar amounts for these changes. And again, we just used an annual salary of $40,000. But you can see for Arizona State Retirement, if someone made $40,000, it would be a $44 increase. If that person was part of Corp, it would be a $136 decrease. And as a reminder, these are percentages, so the dollar amounts depend on the salary amount. So it would vary depending on how much the salary was. Going into fiscal year 21 budget, critical funding issues. Slide 58 shows the items that are considered to be mandated increases. The primary and general election costs. These requests show the needed amount net of reimbursements from the state. So just to note that these are not the full cost of these elections, but this is the cost that we believe will not be reimbursed by the state. So we would need to increase our budget by, the budget by these amounts without reimbursement. The Superior Court restoration to competency, the current budget is $415,000. Fiscal year 19 actuals were 832,000. And fiscal year 20 is estimated to be 700,000. Superior Court has come to the board for an increase in this budget in fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20 in order to meet the needs. So if we were to increase the budget by 250,000, we feel it would be more appropriate for the mandated cost. Slide 59. These are items that are mission, considered mission critical. You can see clerk of court, this is a request to shift .21 FTEs from fee accounts to general fund. This special revenue fund is in a deficit. And none of the other funds that the clerk has have the capacity. The alternative is to eliminate or reduce hours to three filled court tech positions. The next one is Health and Human Services, operational increase for clinic services. This is specific to immunization program. We average 85% recovery. So the original request was for 100,000, but 15,000 is the net cost. So that's the actual cost to the general fund would be 15,000. Operation, Human and Health, Health and Human Services Operational Increase for Medical Examiner's Office. This is specific to an increase in toxicology fees. The original request was for 100,000, but this was reduced to align with an actual expense trend. So we've seen that it's less than the 100,000. Information Technology Recurring Operational Expenses. This is the annual cost of IT security project, products and internet circuits. The original request was for 535,566 recurring dollars. But the data loss prevention, which costs 110,000, will not be renewed for fiscal year 21. So we were able to reduce this increase to 425,000. Also, information technology, the cost of Microsoft Office licenses. This was previously paid from PC Repair and Replacement Fund, which is now depleted. So the need for this is $250,000 to keep all of the Microsoft Office licenses for employees. The next slide, we have an increased contract attorney budget. The current base budget is 292,000. Fiscal year 19 actuals were 523,000. And fiscal year 20 actuals are estimated at 750,000. There may be some release from, relief from the additional public defender staff added in fiscal year 20. But as you will recall, the legal defender has come to the board a few times this fiscal year to get an increase to meet the needs. So we felt 130,000 would get them to a better spot for these expenses. Public Defender Shift .25 Paralegal from Fee Funds to General Fund. Same similar situation as the clerk, special revenue fund is in a deficit. And there are no other public defender funds that have capacity. So the alternative is to eliminate or reduce hours to one filled paralegal position. The Recorder, we have the East Flagstaff Voting Site. It's not demanded, but this is a set, kind of an expectation by the public at this point that that is available to them. And that's 26,000 one time. The Sheriff Increase in Overtime Budget. The request was for 533,645. But vacancy savings can cover the majority of that. And just as a reminder, we, you know, we talked about overtime budgets. The last increase to the overtime budget for the Sheriff's Department was in fiscal year 14. Superior Court Judicial Services Budget Increase. This is an increase for juror lodging, expert witnesses, and court reporters, which have left the department over budget for the last several years. So the summary of all of those that we're looking at, the total recommended summary for these items that it's felt are critical funding. They're either mandated or mission critical. We have a one-time amount of 876,716 and a recurring amount of 914,279. And as County Manager Jane just mentioned, we will be bringing additional tenure plans to you on May 5th with these numbers included in the tenure plans. Any questions on those or additional information you might need us to bring back to you? Okay. So moving forward, we have opportunities to address expected significant decline in revenues. Some of the expenditure reduction measures we will work, we will work with are working with departments to develop plans for cost reductions where possible. As mentioned, we have the Vacancy and Reclassification Review Board. And then we are reaching out to employees for participation in the Personal Day Purchase Program. So those are the starting points. Flexibility Language. Fiscal year 21, again, we have authorized for 1.25 million. We have 250,000 allocated to the Sheriff's Office Technology Needs. And then the remaining 1 million is included in the tenure plan scenarios, but we don't necessarily have it designated for a specific purpose at this time. In prior years, flexibility language was used to pay down the public safety pension. By doing this, Coconino County is now 70.4% funded. And our unfunded liability is 15.2 million. And on this slide, you can see where Coconino County is compared to other counties. Slide 66 shows the unfunded pension liability for all of Coconino County's cities and towns. So you can also see kind of where we are with that one. Slide 67 shows the impact of additional pay down of public safety pension. So the left side of this slide is if we were to make an additional payment in the amount of 1 million dollars. So if we used the flexibility language for an additional 1 million contribution. The left, right side of the slide is if we just paid the budgeted contribution. What would, the result would be, and you can see down in the highlighted lines at the bottom, is that we would see the impact of the 1 million payment beginning in fiscal year 24, where our funding ratio would increase to 75.7% compared to 73.9% had we not paid an additional contribution. In fiscal year 25, we would can, we would begin to recognize a savings of $60,000 in our contribution amount. And those are those circled areas. The 1029.4 would be the contribution amount if we were to make the additional million. The 1089.8 is what we would pay if we did not. So it would be $60,000 savings moving forward, but we would not see that benefit until fiscal year 25. So at this point, we are to our discussion point by the board. I know that was a lot of information. And to kind of rehash, County Manager Jane had mentioned at the very beginning that we would like some direction in regards to the revenue modeling that we presented, the assumptions for the tenure plans, the critical funding issues, and the use of the flexibility language.
I'll go ahead and hop into it.
I'm sorry, I just had to take you off, I had to get off the mute, I apologize. Supervisor Ryan, go ahead.
Sure, and you know, it'll be a broader conversation. Obviously, we have time to talk about it as we progress through, although not as much time, but still. In terms of the flexibility language, that's one that I was curious about. You know, what would be the offset of the pay down on it? Hate giving up on, you know, eliminating that 15 million, you know, deficit that we have associated with that. That we're eating away at it at a slower rate gives us an opportunity to pause. The difference of, you know, you can consider it a loss in a way is 60,000. You know, at this point, focusing in on the COVID would be a good priority associated with that. The, because it would have been the savings and the recovery that we would have been watching associated with that. So for now, I'm there, I don't like getting away from it. I think we, you know, still want to keep our head to the stone, so to speak, or just moving forward on the pay down related to that. The, yeah, different assumptions. One piece that we, you know, we're, we're all going to try and navigate this, and we have three different scenarios, which is good. There is a piece that's going to affect us, maybe associated with cost. And a piece of it is recovery is what happens with the COVID recovery. Now, I, I see you were programming in, you know, the 75%. That's based on the current cost that we assume right now. There are a lot of unknowns related to that. And we just want to keep that at the back of our minds. Now, we have to project a budget for how we move ahead and what we can handle for that. So it's good to have different scenarios on this. But, you know, as this transpires and as we go through discovery of impacts, you know, I think it's almost begging for in the future, we're not even done with this budget and putting the projections together, but that we would be considering, you know, regular updates and looking at adjustments, the impact, both positive and negative related to that. I like that we have the three plans in place. The, the capital piece, I think it's good where we have it programmed right now. That's an unknown quantity. There's a virtue in having a capital project when we're in a downturn. We're not quite sure what our needs are. We're not set to get into the expenditure component immediately with that. It's one that I think we need to, to keep a close eye on and come back with discussions of, do we keep it in that position? Do we modify it? How dire do our needs become, or do we have opportunities? And, you know, I'll use the last recession as an example, and I think we talked about it a little bit in the last meeting is when we did have that money coming in related to the Schultz flood, we were also in the recession. And there was a benefit to our, there were, there were a lot of private firms out there that, and the impact that we helped stimulus, so to speak, on a local level that we had that actually was beneficial to the region and to, not, not the full economy, but segments associated with that. So these are pieces, you know, that just kind of wander into my head. I'm still processing this though, you know, as you do it and you unfold it, there's discovery and there are thoughts that come back and forth on this. You probably want more questions answered, but that's what I'll start it out with.
And Supervisor Ryan, can I just clarify, this is, this is Liz. So can I just clarify with you, did you, did you? So I just wanted to clarify in your conversation, because I missed this, I just, I want to make sure I have this correct. Did you say that you wanted the additional million to go to pay down the pension? Or that you were, did you give an opinion on that, or did you want it? Or were you supporting it going into the, the budget?
I can see us using it for the budget at this point for the future. I want to get back to it. Yeah, we just have so many unknowns right now that pausing because the cost benefit is reduced currently, and because of the circumstance, we have so many unknowns, I could see us using it right now as it relates to the COVID and the, and the budget. However...
Okay, thank you, I had misheard that, so I just wanted to clarify that. Because, I mean, I'll share where I'm at, I mean, I'm, I'm with you there, I just wanted to, I heard you wrong, so I wanted to clarify, thank you.
Yeah, and I may have confused it because, you know, is, if we have the opportunity for flexibility as the year has continued, which I think we need to continue to advocate for, then when, as quickly as possible, getting back to going after that pay down, that's, that's the piece that I may have confused it on. If you're talking, Liz, you're, we can't hear you.
I am so sorry, I had, what I was asking was if Megan or Jimmy had any comments based on what they heard from you. Otherwise, I was going to open it up to the other members of the board for questions. for questions or comments.
Madam Chair, I would just say I really appreciate the feedback. It's, it's really helpful. And just so you know, for, not only for Supervisor Ryan's comments and Chair Archuleta, your comment, for everybody's comments, then we will take these then and come back again the afternoon of the 5th, a week from today, for further deliberation and, you know, pull this apart some more with you, including some updated 10-year plans that have, have the one-time and recurring and a carryover in there as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the board? Any questions or discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead. Supervisor Parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, it looks like to me that if we use the remaining 1 million in the flexibility language, we, if we don't pay down on the PSPRS for one year, and we go back to the 10-year plan assumptions on number 15 and 16, we are probably going to need a million dollars there if we don't get more than the 75% reimbursement from the federal government. Now, I realize from the, the email that I saw yesterday from Congressman O'Halloran that he is recommending that we get 100% reimbursement on this, but that, that hasn't happened yet. That's his recommendation. So I kind of think we need to maybe hold that 1 million back from pay down on PSPRS and, and put it to our, our, put it to our, our general fund or our, on this 15 and 16 on the 10-year plan assumptions. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Parks. Others? Okay, Supervisor Babbitt? Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you managing the conversation here today. So, so let's see, primary three, kind of the assumptions, revenue modeling, and service improvement. So there is, as far as the revenue modeling and the scenarios, there is no way I am getting, going to get behind the quick in terms of where I think we are going to be going. So that, that is not on the table for me personally as something that I think is going to be relational to reality. I think we continue to hear folks talk about what will be coming back here, even if, even if we continue to flatten and we actually do get a little bit of opening back up. I think there seems to be pretty significant consensus that we are going to have some level of impact again until a vaccine not only comes, but until it comes with wide-scale distribution. And, and that is a, an amazing task to try and figure out how even the supply chain gears up to 350 million, you know, pieces or however many people, you know, it's going to need at that point. But anyway, so no way the quick is in. I'm somewhere between the, the deep model and the long. I think, so those are the two that have relevancy for me. And I think, given where we are and given the uncertainty, I will advocate that we kind of look more at the long in terms of hedging, but also have a strategy that as we unfold, as we get through the summer and into the fall, we have some trigger points that will allow us to make decisions. As we talked about, you know, some this morning under item four, you know, we have to, in my personal opinion, we have to err on the side of being more judicious as opposed to less judicious right now. And that would lead me towards the long model that has some opportunity to open a window down the road, should that come. But as we all know, once you open a window, you never can close it. That is why the 550 one-time, I am not there for, for this fiscal year coming up, the one time. I, I just, I'm not there. I think there's too much uncertainty around it. As far as some of the assumptions go, I appreciate the methodology, how you got to the 38% for Q4 of our current fiscal year. You know, I, I, at this point, I think I'm going to be, that would be, I would feel good about that. I, I look at our sectors that you did to, to adjust upwards from the 31 to 38% and appreciate that. I certainly don't want to go any lower than that. And I do think we may be going deeper than that as we head into the next fiscal year. I did have a question. Oh, and before I go to my question, I am not a fan of using JLBC's numbers. They are historically a financially liberal predictor. They, I don't believe, ever use recessionary planning in any of their modeling. So I'm, I'm actually not a fan of using JLBC numbers. They are overly optimistic in my personal perspective. And so we may want to talk about whose numbers we do use, whether it's Deloitte's moving forward or not. I did have a question, Jimmy or Megan, on the pension. So when, when do we, is there any timing associated? Obviously, the sooner you deploy the, the flexibility pension buy down, the sooner the principal savings come. But there's no, that can happen at any point, correct? During a fiscal year?
That is correct. We can make that payment anytime during the fiscal year.
Okay. So, you know, I think I would kind of split the difference here and say, put the million in with the goal of pension buy down, but don't deploy it until, you know, we get a few more months down the road and kind of have some semblance, and maybe even more like into the fall. But I really would love to see some triggers here. I would love to see us go with the most conservative approach with triggers that allow us to open some of these, these boxes should the conditions warrant it. And, but start out absolutely thinking that this is going to continue to, to be impactful for us. And then the last is the service improvement, the, you know, most of them look okay, but I, I think that we should be using, you know, you know, I, I, I'm not sure we're at the level that we're at of what we're calling critical summaries of a million reoccurring and 900, 915 reoccurring in one time. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not sure we're there, or I should, I'll speak for myself. I'm not sure I'm there, that saying that those are must haves. So those are my pieces. Take out quick, okay? Those, just, I'm sorry, just looking at my notes here. And, yep, I think that's it.
Thank...
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Babbitt. Yes, any, any comments from Megan or Jimmy?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
Yeah, thank you. So again, Supervisor Babbitt, thank you for your feedback. It's helpful. I think that's why referencing, and several have brought up the question about PSPRS. That's why slide 67 was included, to give some perspective of what, you know, currently right now, the situation that we're in, that we did not foresee a couple of months ago, where we're at right now, why staff is recommending the million. And again, it's a, it's a cost benefit analysis and a policy decision that you all make. But, you know, we just feel like that million, but using a trigger, we can explore those, because we're going to be bringing back some, some trigger scenarios to you next Tuesday. But just wanted to make sure that, you know, hopefully that sheet shows you that we do have, you know, the same percentage funded through 2023 with or without the million. And then, so it's out to 2024, where you have a difference in percentage funding, the same contribution amount, and then you actually see some general fund savings moving forward after that. But understanding that, you know, we will continue to move up in our percentage funded just under normal state because of the pay down that the board did previously. Going to the critical funding issues.
Yep, great.
Yeah, thank you. So going to the critical funding issues, I, I hear what you're saying. You know, it just, we tried to bring some, some context to these, specifically, you know, things like RTC, where, you know, we've been, you know, for at least a couple of years, we can give some more history. We've been paying, you know, this amount. And to, and so what happens is, is that the Superior Court comes back, as I believe Marty did twice this year, and asks for increases. And so part of our goal, at least at a staff level, just so you understand it, kind of where our thought pattern is, is to true up the expenses in those categories that we have to pay, regardless of, you know, what we do with budget of the county, and true those up to what we believe, using some historical numbers, will be real, closer to real numbers in FY '21. We could say, let's keep the current budget of RTC at $415,000, understanding we spent 832 in 20, in 19, and we're estimated to spend 700 this year. And understanding that then they would come back then, and we just pull out of contingency some additional dollars, which we believe will happen at 415,000. So I know that's not the particular one, but I'm just giving you examples of, we also have some staffing impacts. Staff has put, the budget staff's put a lot of effort into working with, like, the clerk of the court on, it's, you know, it's 15, 13,800 bucks, but it would impact her staffing level, because the clerk does not have additional funding sources to pull that from. So we, we making a decision to modify staffing level in that department. And, and so the clerk knows that they're likely not getting additional staff, but felt like keeping the department whole was important, understanding that staff has dove into other special funds and things that just don't exist anymore because they've been used previously. So I'd love to, we could pull these apart, actually even some more on the 5th. But I do understand your caution and in saying, you know, you want eight, we want 877,000 more in one time and 914,000 in reoccurring. But there is some thought behind that and a lot of staff work that's gone into these with the departments. So, but I appreciate your perspective and continue to ask the questions, please, and we'll do our best to continue to answer those.
So, yeah, and so I think that's really helpful, Jimmy, but so, and maybe, I think maybe my observation number is they're incorrect focus. So what I'm talking about, I'm not saying that that list is not a meaningful list, the part, so where are there opportunities to offset the reoccurring in one time? So what I'm seeing, and, and please connect, correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm seeing is only an add with no associated deletes. And so just as, as businesses around this community, this county, and this state are looking at not only how do you bring in any new revenue, but also how do you reduce your expenses, I am saying as one, that we should be having a plan of what the reduction is to meet the one-time and reoccurring money. And I'm, I'm saying that as I read this, there is only an add component to this now. And what are the triggers or, you know, implications of saying, sometimes you got, you got a cut? And I understand no one, I understand that's a painful conversation. I understand that that's a conversation, you know, that is happening across jurisdictions as they furlough people, as they reduce positions. And, you know, my point is, what is the offsets to those numbers? Because I'm, I'm, I'm not comfortable with them just being adds as, as one.
Madam Chair, I just, I appreciate that, Mr. Babbitt. Can I just share one thing, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
So the, the additional vacancy savings, again, is, is partially to account for that? I mean, we're, we're looking, we are acknowledging there are additional vacancy savings, and the vacancy reclassification committee is meeting every week now and working with departments. So that is one put. The other is the million dollars that staff is recommending at this point. But understanding that there are other cuts that departments will need to be making and as we're, as we're moving forward and working with them. And we're, and our goal at a, at a staff level is protect the workforce, but work with departments individually to find the savings wherever possible that they can bring to the table without affecting their mission.
Thank you. Supervisor Babbitt, other?
Madam Chair.
I do want to make sure we go around to everyone. So go ahead.
Very much. Yep, appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Supervisor Ryan, we'll go to you, and then next we'll go to Vice Chair Fowler, and then I will comment after, and then see if Supervisor Parks has additional information. Go ahead, Supervisor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And a piece of the discussion, similar but different, is, so we're, we're kind to, we're trying to predict what the future will be and, and, you know, where art was going associated with being conservative, we see projections that certainly, you know, can, can impact us substantially. Absolutely, we need to be looking at that and paying attention. I also agree with his summary of JLBC. They've, they've always been good to the, good to their projections, but less conservative in how they approach it. By the same token, we're going to go through, or we have the potential going through different surges, depending upon what the expectations are and how they influence our mission. There might be an uptick on the criminal side, or maybe it's on the health side. A piece that I hope we would pay attention to is, with all the unemployment coming about and/or, you know, people potentially, you know, not, not having their businesses, or do we get into housing discussions? We might have base needs that we start to shift our refocus to, or maybe it's a jobs program. So that's, that's a piece of, we need to be there for the sake of community. What we do traditionally, yes, we have constitutional mandates associated with it. By the same token, we're into a whole unknown, and, and how can we respond to it? So, you know, using the conservative piece, but also thinking about how we have regular conversations of what's happening and how things modify is, is an element associated with this. No matter what, we have to put together a budget, and we have to make the assumptions and try and do a projection. So, you know, I do appreciate, you know, where we are right now, and this is going to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Ryan. Vice Chair Fowler, do you have anything you would like to comment overall regarding the presentation or any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I really appreciate the presentation, and I know this has taken a long while, and that it's, it is, it's a whole team effort and such unusual times right now and a lot of unknowns. I really want to, I like the idea of having to be very, being on the more cautious side and want to make sure that we have the, I guess, more on the conservative side and just really look at our budget and seeing how it will project out 10 years. And, you know, we have to really think about where is our community? We're still having the economic impact study that is being done by NAU. We're working with our, with the epidemiologists from NAU and our own staff. I think we really need to look at that, really pay attention to that. And then, and where, where is, where is our community? We have unemployment that is really high, and people have, still have not been able to access their unemployment dollars. And we still, people are still in need of housing and some people, housing assistance and has not really, some people have not been able to access those dollars. We don't know how many businesses will be able to reopen, and we don't know how many businesses we're going to end up, they're going to end up folding and not reopening their doors. And we're a tourism town, and so when we look at our budget, what are some of the needs in our community that we're really not looking at? I think that, I was thinking the million dollars that might be put into the county general funds. Those dollars may be used for some of that. No, Supervisor Babett was saying that maybe that needs to be put aside, some of that for paying down the, the debt. Maybe that can be the case. But at the same time, what are some pressing needs in the community that we may be able to look at as well? So that's, that's just the overall that I'm, I'm, I'm really looking at, just, just the great need that is out in the community that, you know, we have communities that are really afraid and just don't know what they're going to do into the future. So just really, okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Fowler. Supervisor Parks, was there anything else that you wanted to, to provide in terms of your perspective? And then I'll weigh in with mine. We'll give you just a few seconds here to unmute. Okay, sure, go ahead.
Yes, I think so. I, I appreciate everybody's view on this. I, I, the entire economic situation is changing daily, sometimes hourly, as, as, as the, as the response to the, to the, to the virus itself changes. But I think that the conservative approach that has been mentioned is, is the, the best one. But what does that mean? Does that mean deep cuts? Does that mean just holding back on, on? It doesn't mean a hiring freeze, but if it means not hiring people to fill vacancies, the vacancy savings, is that going to, is that going to handle it? Are we going to have to eventually furlough some of our people just because we don't have the money to pay them? If we, if we, if we see this long recovery recession model come through, come true, and we have people losing their businesses and, and people that are unable to pay property taxes, people that are unable to pay income taxes, which don't really affect us at our level, but it does at the state and federal level, and a lot of the reimbursement that we may be getting is going to come from the, the federal level. But I, I think that, that we do need to take a cautionary conservative approach to this, and we need to do as, as, as a couple of folks have already suggested, we need to kind of take it as it comes and take it day by day. And I believe that this, I, I don't really have a clue how, which, which of these economic scenarios we're going to, we're going to see. But I seriously doubt the quick one is going to be the one that we see. The deep one, the deep one with, with the long recovery may be the one we're going to see. Maybe we're going to see it, a super long recovery. If we lose people, if people lose their businesses and lose their jobs and it maintains, and, and that situation maintains for a long time, we're going to be looking at serious problems with our, excuse me, with our revenue and with our ability to, to, to do the things we need to do in this county to, to run the county. I, I'm looking forward to the next session of this where we have some more information. Mr. Jane promised some more information on several things. So I'm going to have to withhold judgment a little bit and not jump out there and profess solutions. Anyway, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Supervisor Parks. I will make some comments and weigh in on this. But before I do, I did want to just let those who are on the phone, which we have in addition to us, about 21 others who are on the phone or on Teams video, if you would like to make a comment as well, or if you have any questions, I welcome that. And the way you can do that is you just, just post on the Q and A that you want to participate and have a question or want to participate in the discussion, and then Eric will add you to the meeting. And that way then we can, we can open up your microphone and you can participate. Okay? So I'll go ahead and do that while, and I'll just, I'll just give my perspective on this. And so first of all, just thanks for the presentation. Very thorough, really, really appreciate all the work that went into this. And we did, I did get a preview of the, of the presentation as well as, I know that Jimmy met with every board member individually, which was great to be able to go over the information. So since then, I've had, I have been thinking a lot about this. And so, as I mentioned in the opening, this was, this is challenging. I, I mentioned that this presentation was going to present the challenges that are in front of us, and certainly it has. So I want to start first with the models that were presented, the three models. And I really appreciate looking at, that the Finance Department and Budget Department looked at the, the approach to this discussion and the models. And so I do agree that the, that what we're probably going to be looking at is the, the long or the deep recession model. I don't think there's going to be anything, anything quick about this because the, the businesses and other organizations, I mean, we've all felt the intensity of this pandemic on the economy and on our, on our businesses and on government. And so I do believe it's going to be one of the other two models, the long or the deep recession model. I do agree with the $1 million that otherwise would have been put in to pay down the unfunded pension liability of putting that into the budget. I do think that that is wise to do that. I, I do think that looking at the, the increments, the, the ones that are mission critical, is going, going after and like scrubbing those even a little bit further to see just if there's any additional savings there. I mean, I, I know that there's already been a look at it. I know that there's, they've been gone through with a fine tooth comb. But just again, would appreciate another look at that to see if, you know, maybe a little bit more into, does it have to happen right away? Does it have to be funded immediately, July 1? Is there some delay to that that can happen? You know, just, just really taking another look at that. I did hear reduction of expenses. I heard, you know, reduction of travel. I heard, you know, that there would, we would ask department heads and elected officials who lead departments to look to see how there can be savings. I understand there's, you know, vacancy savings. I understand not filling positions. But I think also, you know, going through and seeing additional expenses that can be cut back on is, is, would be very, very helpful. I think that there is, there is nothing about this that is going to be business as usual as this, with this, with this budget. I think one of the things we have to be prepared for is, and I don't see us getting back to business as usual. And I think one of the things we need to be prepared, prepared for is the round two of this virus, which, you know, we understand there's a strong possibility that there's be another round of, of this. We're not even through the first round, and we haven't even peaked. And of course, we're already thinking about round two in August. And so I think we need to be prepared for that and for the impacts of that. Obviously, there's a lot of gaps that need to be filled in the community. There's a lot of, a lot of loss. There's a lot of, there's layoffs. There's, you know, talk about other organizations that are doing furloughs. And so that continues then to put pressure on us as county, as county government with rental assistance, with basic needs like food boxes, with utility assistance, with trying to help people find jobs. And so I think we need to be prepared for that. So to the extent that we've already, with the $1 million that we're putting in, that we already see that going to mission critical things possibly or other needs that we have, we still haven't even, you know, fully addressed the magnitude of the need in the community related specifically to, to the virus and to people being out of work. And so, I mean, we, we just need to anticipate that and be ready for it. So there'll be a lot of gaps that need to be filled, and certainly we won't be able to do it all. And I think just looking over the short-term recovery, the short-term demands on Coconino County, and then the long-term impacts that it's, that, that this is going to have. And I don't, and the long-term recovery and, and certainly, again, we have that in the 10-year plan, and we have the long or the deep recession model, which is very revealing, very telling. So I think the other thing is, I mean, my primary goal would be to, you know, maintain the workforce that we have. I could, I definitely see us, you know, not filling positions to have those vacancy savings. I think, you know, I think it's probably implied that it would be very difficult to, 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 to look at increases in, in salaries at this particular point just because there's so many unknowns and we have, we have to be, you know, prepared for the unknown. And just looking at the budget and the challenges that we have right now, I think we need to, we need to be, you know, just upfront and say that that would be, for me, as one member of the board, it would be challenging for me to agree to any increases in salary, knowing that we have such great demands on the budget, and we have so many unknowns at this particular time. And so I look forward to continuing the conversation. I think what I'd like to see is, again, just looking through the mission critical requests again, looking, asking each department to identify a reduction in expenses, looking at what the outlook would be if vacancies are not filled at all, and then looking, and then projecting some type of, some funds that we would set aside to meet what may be anticipated community needs. So that's where I'm at. It's, it's challenging. We've, we have, we've been challenged before in Coconino County. And together, we've, you know, we've stepped up. We've gone through this before. We've made it, you know, out of the other end, and we, you know, we continue to provide services to the public. And so we will do that again. And granted, this is unprecedented. But we are resilient, and we will work on this together, and we will go through it together, and we will prevail. And so I thank everyone for, for being at the presentation. Open it up to anybody who's on the line right now, the, the other 30 folks that are on the line to give their viewpoint as well. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this item?
Madam Chair, this is Eric Peterson. Just really quick, we have about 50 attendees. So again, attendees, please post in the Q and A if you'd like to speak. We've got about 30 more here in our president presenter's queue that do have presenter privileges at the moment, so.
Oh, wonderful. That's great. I show that we have, your screen is probably a lot more, is yours much more accurate than mine? So I have, that we had an additional like 30. So this is great. Well, thank you all for attending. And please don't hesitate to provide your perspective, and please do so now. And you might just need to unmute yourself. Eric, how would you, could you just give the instructions on how to do that again? Just to give people one more opportunity to be able to weigh in.
Certainly. So if you are on the phone, press star six to unmute yourself. Your toolbar will come up, and there will be a microphone with a slash through it. Just click on that when you're hovering over the screen, and then we can ask you to speak. Again, if you are an attendee, so not one of the scheduled presenters, post in the Q and A, and I can add county employees in to become a presenter and speak to the board in this moment.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Jimmy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to, to welcome Siri Mulaney to the county, even though she officially starts June 1st. She's putting her toe in the water with us. And Madam Chair, she is on the line, and maybe we give her a chance, if it's okay with you, to, to say hello and share a few words and thoughts that she has for the board and the organization.
Thank you, Jimmy. And I know that, I know that you mentioned this to the organization about Siri joining our team. But would you like to, again, just convey that to the organization before we turn that over to her?
That's fair. So Siri rejoins our, our Coconino County family as our, our Finance Director effective June 1st. She comes to us most recently from Northern Arizona University, where she also was Finance Director at Coconino Community College previous to that. And previous to that, she was a member of our finance and budget team here at the county. So thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to welcome Siri back to the county family. Again, she'll be with us officially on Monday, June 1st, but is going to participate in some of our budget conversations between now and then, including today. She had received all of our budget material, and thank you, Joanne Keen, and agreed to join us for the conversation to get some additional perspective of where we're at as a board and an organization.
Great. Thank you, Jimmy. Siri, welcome. You have worked with a few members of the board here before when you were last in Coconino County. And so we welcome you back and certainly would open it up to you for any perspectives you wish to share.
Well, great. Well, first of all, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you. Yes, we can all hear you.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board and County Manager Jane. I'm very excited to be rejoining the county family after several years. I want to point out, I think Megan did a great job on the presentation that I saw today. I did have a chance to review it prior, and I think that it's wise to be looking at the different scenarios, the, the various recessionary models. For now, I don't know that I have a lot of comments on it. This is really my first, you know, dipping my toe back in the water, so to speak, of, of county finances. But I think that, you know, with all the challenges that are ahead with the COVID response and financially, that it looks like you've already started some really great work towards, you know, addressing those issues and, you know, having a strong financial. having a strong financial perspective going into the next budget year, all things considered. So I just wanted to share that, that I'm, you know, mostly I'm so happy to be back and I look forward to continuing to work on the FY '21 budget and working with the board.
Great. Well, thank you, Siri. We appreciate you being, attending this work session with us and certainly look forward to the perspective that you bring, the experience that you bring, not only having worked here in Coconino County, but having worked in other organizations since. And as you already mentioned it, I mean, there's an incredible group of very talented and savvy individuals in the Finance Office and in our Budget Office that certainly will be able to continue to help inform the board to make the, the best decisions that we can with reliable information. And so thank you again for joining us and we look forward to you joining us for future budget presentations as we move through our budget to the extent that you possibly can.
Thank you.
Okay, so now just one last call to anybody who would like to speak to this item. We welcome your perspective. This is not, you know, this is, yes, the five of us need to make decisions and give direction regarding our budget. And, but we don't do that in isolation. We, you know, welcome your perspectives. We want your perspectives because as I said, we're walking through this together. This is not something that we are doing alone or that you're doing alone. As the county, we need all of us to be in unison and be able to walk through these challenging times. Is there any member who would like to say anything else? Who's on the call? Any, any county team member? Okay. Any member of the board that would like to add something else? All right. So Jimmy, I'll go ahead, Supervisor Ryan, yes.
So I had the opportunity to work with Siri in the past. Want to welcome her back. I know she and Megan were a good team under Andy way back when, under the budget. And so welcome her back on board. And yeah, we do have challenging times, but appreciate everybody's work that they put forward on this and look forward to our continued discussion so that we can make the right decisions as it relates to, there's a, you know, we, we fill a role when people are in need, that people depend upon. And so we need to be able to do it in a way that functions well also. So, so anyway, look forward to the conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Ryan. Any other members of the board?
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Vice Chair Fowler.
Supervisor Lena Fowler, I want, I too want to welcome Siri back. Just really excited that she'll be joining the county family again. And I just want to appreciate Megan and the county budget team that put this together. I know all the departments have been involved. And so it's really a tough decision at the point where we are. And then we have great challenges just with, that's been presented to us throughout the year internally with various departments' budgets and stuff. So this is going to be, this really makes you think about the community, the situation we're in right now. And then just looking out and seeing how, how are we going to meet the needs of, of our community? Because that's where our, our job is to really deliver the most efficient and quality services to our communities that we have, that we are, that brings us here. So I just want to thank everyone and I just, it makes you really think about more in depth. I think, I don't know, maybe it's always been that way, but it just, at this point, it feels like you really, really makes me think about every little number that's here and everything that has been brought before us, all the different scenarios. So I just want to thank everyone, Jimmy and your team. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Chair Fowler. So with that, I do want to say that I do feel like we're at the point where we really need to, you know, ask the public to help us advocate for funding from the federal government as they continue to put forth various packages, care packages, stimulus packages to deal with the COVID and the pandemic that we're in. As you might know, the last package that was voted on did not include funding, direct allocation funding for counties. And we are the ones that find ourselves on the front lines, you know, fighting the pandemic, addressing the emergencies that it's creating and trying to meet the needs of our residents who need assistance right now due to loss of job, loss of work, and all the things that were mentioned earlier in this presentation. And so, you know, we understand there will probably be an additional package coming forth. And in that package, we are asking for direct allocation to counties. We are asking for funding to create jobs programs. We're asking for funding for shovel-ready projects and that, and for infrastructure projects, which will help put people back to work, communities back to work and will stimulate our economy. And so that's, we need to do that because as you can see, the county budget cannot bear the brunt of the pandemic and the economic shortfall that it's creating, the impact to our economy. So I would ask everyone who is watching this meeting to contact your member of Congress, our congressional delegation, if you know, other members of Congress, to advocate for counties to receive direct funding so that we can put people to work and so that we can meet the needs of our community. With that, Jimmy, why don't you go over when our next financial discussion would be? I know that's coming up. And so if you would like to just again, go over the schedule, we would appreciate it. So people know what the, the next part of this discussion is going to be going forth.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board and to all of you. And thank you for your patience. This has been a work in progress. This is not, as several have stated, business as usual this year. And the schedule and the plan is different than the organization is used to. So we will take the feedback from today, further develop some other information. I know as Mr. Parks and others had, had mentioned, that our intention is and has been to come back the afternoon of Tuesday, May 5th. So we will have a regular board meeting at 10:00 a.m. on the 5th and then have a lunch break and then come back at 1:15 and spend the afternoon in this budget discussion space. So please make plans for, for again, Tuesday, May 5th at 1:15. And then the following week, we hope to have additional, another month of state shared revenue and county sales tax on or about Monday, May 11th. That is our hope, that we received them on the 11th of April this past month. So, you know, earlier this month. So we're hoping that's going to be the case. And then we plan on having two, two half-day discussions on Tuesday, May 12th, from 9:00 to noon. So we're modifying the time of those two, again, to do, try to do half-day, 9:00 to noon, because we have a board meeting that evening at 6:00 o'clock. Our normal board meeting, that's our evening meeting for the month. And then the next day, on Wednesday, the 13th, we hope to go for, I plan to go from 9:00 to noon again and then use the afternoon on the 13th, should it be needed. So the, the, the main budget discussions, again, to put the more meat on the bones and some finality, then the budget team would then have to, have the time to put together the tentative budget for consideration on Tuesday, June 4th. So on the 5th, we will be bringing back again additional information that will include some revised 10-year plans, that will include carryover and critical funding issues, pull apart some more of the one-time recurring, the puts and takes list we will have as well, including some trigger models for consideration by the board.
Thank you, County Manager Jane. Appreciate you mapping that out for us and look forward to everyone's participation on those meetings as well. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. We are going to take a recess until 3:25. That's eight minutes. We will then come back for our roundtable discussion, which will include discussion update and possible direction to staff regarding state and/or federal legislative or administrative matters. Also, an update from the county manager and then roundtable from members of the board. So let's take a recess for eight minutes and we will reconvene at 3:25. Thank you. Welcome back. We just had a brief recess for eight minutes. It's now 3:25. We're going to get back to our Board of Supervisors meeting. And we have item number 13 that we are on. This is an update and possible direction regarding state or federal legislation and/or administrative manners and matters. Excuse me, Eric Peterson, Director of Public Affairs. He's going to lead this item. Eric?
Thank you very much, Chairwoman, and good afternoon to the members. I'm going to go through a couple items for you in relation to some state and federal issues, but then also just a brief touch on town hall planning and some conversation with you. Did not want to overrun our time this morning, but do need to get some direction and conversation with you. So I'm going to get navigated over to our town hall agendas. I think that's our best place to start. Get them up on the screen so you can see. I realize that they may be a little bit small. I'll try to zoom in here to the most important one, which is our public town hall to start. And County Manager Jane and Deputy County Manager Andrea Nee have been involved in these conversations. have been involved in these conversations. We are proposing an agenda for a Monday night town hall for the public for use in interacting with the public with issues about COVID-19. Main topics would be our public health response, our social services update, and then an update on economic reopening. We do expect the governor to make some kind of decision this week, more than likely to extend either in full the current executive orders or to modify them in some way and begin a phased reopening project. So, this will be timely. We wanted to give the board enough time to sort of let that sink in that likely will come tomorrow, maybe Thursday from the governor and develop some thoughts and ideas. And then also use the time to really discuss the things that we're, what we call the top 10 questions on this list. What are we getting the questions the most of and what purpose, what do they bring to the table? And can we just answer them rather than waiting on having people in the audience to ask them since we know we're getting these questions so many times? And then obviously an open Q and A as well for the audience to be a part of. In doing so, and one of the changes that will come to the meetings that we're in right now is we have ordered a Zoom package. Information Technology is taking care of that. One of the limitations of Microsoft Teams that we're on here is that it is built for presenting, for a person like me to present to you, but not for on-the-go audience reaction to simply elevate people who are attendees. Right now, as the producer of this meeting, I can see we have 33 attendees, not including the 20 that are in the link that you could all see members of the board as presenters. And so, it's a challenge in Teams. Zoom allows us that opportunity. We'll continue to use Teams as an enterprise function going forward within the organization for meetings, but the Zoom will allow us to utilize the public. We do plan to stream that likely to our YouTube page. That is where I'd like to put the streams of this and possibly in the future going forward, our board meetings, rather than paying for the Swaget contract. And also are going to be working with Peaks to put us on NAU TV and connecting with the appropriate sources there. So, today, I really want to go over and make sure that as a board, you are comfortable with this, the agenda's pattern to have one of you be a presenter and speaker so we don't have to go into the special session protocols and not have all five of you on. One or two, we obviously could add a second without meeting quorum. But if that is not your preference and you wish to have all five on, this is the moment to sort of have that so we can prepare for what will need to be a meeting recorded in a minute. And then I just wanted to bring up one of the open Q and A questions that we really need to converse with you about is, do you want the public on the YouTube page or from home, watching people what they watch on the NAU TV station? There is the opportunity for them to email, just as they've done now, or use a chat function to post questions. But do you want the public to have a live camera where they can turn on their camera and ask you a question, audio via the audio and visual side of the program? If you do, that's fine. I just, we're bringing it up to make sure we go through all these points of what you wish to have in these kinds of town halls, because it obviously does represent some, there's some trepidation at times to open a camera up to folks that you don't know what they're going to say and what's going to come out or what kind of atmosphere the question comes in. But at the same point, we do want to offer the best public interactivity and transparency we can. So, that is a question I pose on top of the whole agenda and format to the board about a format for the town hall. So, I'll pause there, Madam Chair, on the public town hall for, excuse me, Monday night.
Thank you very much Eric. First of all, that's exciting. I think members of the public will be really happy to be able to get the information. And what I'm hearing from you is that it would be, people could connect via their computer or their tablets, laptops. They could also connect via phone and they could also, we're working with NAU to have it also via their channel.
That's correct. The NAU stream would not be interactive. That would be a TV show, but they couldn't email us if they wanted to or watch and then join on the other platforms.
Okay. And you're working on the agenda for that. And so, today, you would like for the board to perhaps weigh in on that and then also find out from the board if they would all like to participate. And if so, then we need to make sure that we have that noticed and we make the appropriate arrangements for that.
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay. Super. Thank you. Well, let me just open it up to members of the board. Let's get the, just the procedural thing down about if all members of the board would like to participate so that we can go ahead and just work on getting that appropriately posted. So, members, what would, tell me what you would prefer.
This is Art. Liz, yeah, I would like to participate. I do a weekly 5:30 every social media video platform that's worked incredibly well. So, I still can do that and then be there at 6:30 here.
Great. Thank you. Vice Chair Fowler?
Well, I was going to say, if it's just two Board of Supervisors, then I don't really need to be on. But if there's more than three that want to be, or more than two that want to be on there, then you know, I can be on there. But I really like the agenda. I think there's people that really, that need to have a lot of questions and need to connect.
Okay. Supervisor Ryan?
Well, actually, yeah, I would like to be on it also, which would create a forum. But to be honest with you, you know, this is a time of, you know, where people are seeking answers and we don't have all of them. But it's a time to provide the opportunity to have that discussion, provide the information that we do have and the opportunity for people to, you know, explore their concerns or options that might be out there. So, you know, I would make sense, I think it would make sense that we post it and bring us, you know, show that we're all there in support. My biggest challenge, no, no, I was going to say, it's past my bedtime. That's the hard part, you know? But that's when people are up. They're available at that point and it's good to do it at that point. So.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Parks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, as long as we're making it a board, we're going to post it and make it a board occasion. That's, I'll certainly be on it. Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Well, that sounds great. And I do think it's important that, I think that's wonderful that all board, members of the board would like to be on it. I think it's important for the community to see all of us united and, you know, and that obviously we're concerned and more than that, the actions that we're taking and also the challenges that we have as a, as an organization. So, that's wonderful. And so, in terms of the agenda, Eric, did you want to go over just, and I know that Lucinda's also been working on this with you as well. And so, I would invite her to also make any comment. But what, as of right now, what are you having outlined in terms of, have outlined in terms of an agenda? And then we can, we'd be, we'd love to give some feedback on that.
Sure. So, I'm going to let Lucinda, I know she has a comments. I'll let her go and then I'll come back with the agenda.
Okay. Super. Lucinda, go ahead.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add, I just noticed that in looking at the agenda again, there was one item that I think we had added, but then I think in a, in a further edits, it may have gotten dropped. But one of the points I think we would want to add is information, how do people access information relative to services that are available to small businesses and businesses? I know, you know, Chris Bastros has done a great job getting information out to the business community, but I do think that, that it would be good to be able to note that here as well, you know, where people can access that kind of information in terms of the federal loans and those types of things. So, I just wanted to add that to the agenda. That was on here at one point, I think, or at least I had it in my mind and failed to add it perhaps. But just wanted to note that we will add that.
Excellent. Yeah, I think that would really be helpful, especially since this second round of funding is open, but yet the actual applications are not open yet. I know there've been a lot of businesses that have been checking even hourly to the SBA website to see if those applications are being accepted. But they can't even fill out the applications at this point for the EIDL because those are, that link is not operational because they're not accepting those right now at this particular time, even though there's additional funding. So, I think that would be great because by then on Monday, there may be some additional information to report. And I know that there's a great interest in that. So, thank you for noting that.
Madam Chair, we certainly, we'll certainly add that. I have on your screens, so everyone can see, a draft agenda. Again, some highlights of what we were looking to talk about, the public health response. So, obviously, the overview of sort of where we are, trends, some highlights from NAU. I want to be careful. Dr. Peoples has made it very clear. She will not speak for NAU, but tried to provide some highlights, but not go into the entire presentation that is posted on our website. Now, the video as well, people can watch it. So, that is out and available. Talk about capacity, hospitalization, sort of the pathway forward in terms of the health response. Right now, the draft agenda follows then with Michelle Axelund giving an update on the social services update. So, where the Safety Net Coalition, accessing resources, the kind of services available, the challenges we see to providing services. Again, a sort of reopening conversation about where the governor is at and what the county may do. Obviously, it is your decision as policymakers. Was listed before, we had the entire board with Mr. Jane offering that update, but that can all, this is, can all change, obviously, right up till the moment we go. It's our show to run. So, that was conversations about that. We will add economic, business entities into that as well in terms of an update on where things stand in that regard. So, those were the updates. And then it was really, here are the questions we're getting that we see on social media. We see these in response to all of our postings, you know, some very particular questions that we see. And I'll just run through them. Dr. Peoples has agreed, these are the ones that we see the most. Why can't I get tested to know for sure I don't have COVID-19? Why is there not a testing site run by the county and page? There are times that positive numbers of cases in certain ZIP codes go down, but yet the overall case count increases or stay the same. Why does that happen? Why are deaths not reported by ZIP code similar to positive case counts? When can we expect to have an antibody test? Is it effective? When will the county be receiving funding from congressional acts? What is the county doing to serve the homeless population with COVID-19? So, again, I'm thinking like max of 10, really, what are the things that we are hearing when we look at our social media response, other constituent concerns that may come in? What's really popping that we can answer without having to have people wait for someone to ask it? We can just answer them as the ones that we hear the most of and then go to open Q and A. This will have to be reworked a little bit to make sure each of you has an opportunity to speak and to address the group. But then obviously, open Q and A and answering some of those top 10 questions, that can be part of a conversation between us all as well. So, that was our thoughts on the agenda. And I'm happy to look through that and walk through that with each of you. So.
Great. Well, thank you, Eric. Really appreciate it. I think in terms of the top 10 questions, I mean, obviously, maybe number one, that's going to be modified just a bit, just because we're having now the testing blitz, but not, you know, not, that will not reach everyone, right? But that, that'll change somewhat. But I think it'd be great if we have, if we know these top 10 questions to also have ahead of time, as you're saying, we're going to have those ready to be answered. So, that if we had an FAQ sheet that we actually could put on our website, like right away that day to that, that evening, that would be super because then we could, we know those are like the questions that are asked most often. Then that we can also tell people that those FAQs are on our website and direct them to that, in addition to going over them quickly in the meeting. And then maybe every board member, this is just an idea, obviously, we have our ears to the ground in terms of our district and the community. I mean, maybe they can bring forth a question, the question that they're most often getting or that they're hearing from the public. And then we can open it to Q and A. But that would be, that would be one way to be able to, to make sure that at least the questions that we're hearing in addition to these top 10, that they're getting in the call center and that are already listed, that we can make sure that every board member gets the opportunity to address that. Then the other thing is in terms of the economic reopening policy update, I mean, obviously, in terms of, it'll depends on the governor's orders about what the plan forward for Coconino County is. You know, I don't know that we'll have that complete, we probably will not have that completely thought out because the board will not have had a chance to meet complete, you know, to talk about that. But certainly, we can talk about, you know, how the governor's orders, you know, can, will, how they'll be followed in Coconino County or the continued following of them, or if there's some change, how that will impact us. And then just in regards to the, oh, go ahead.
So, Madam Chair, on that point, and this, we patterned this trying to give you enough time to react, but as soon as we could do a town hall. This is a fundamental question of timing, which I would leave to you as the board. If you wish to move the town hall till after you've had a chance to meet, to react and decide a pathway forward for the county, that may be helpful as well, right? Or we have another, we may have to have another town hall or some kind of meeting in that regard. Reopening, I believe, will become more and more of the issue we will hear more and more about, right? Because it is so politically twinged in so many ways, not necessarily in this, this local area, but you know, just across, across America. So, that may be, you know, we put it on Monday. You could certainly push this back if you want and have a chance to meet on Tuesday about that issue and have a sense of the board going into a public meeting. So.
Sure. Well, let's talk about that as a board. I mean, obviously, we could move it to like Wednesday night. Or we could have another, it really depends, obviously, on what the governor's, what the governor is going to have and what we would expect would be a upcoming press conference at some point soon. So, what do the board members think about that? Do you want to, do you want to go ahead and continue to shoot for Monday? Or do you think a Wednesday meeting, expecting to hear from the governor since a couple of his executive orders do expire at the end of the month? You just need to unmute yourself.
Madam Chair, this is Supervisor Parks. I would, I would be willing to go for the Wednesday date.
Okay. Other members of the board?
I'm fine with that. This is Art. And then I do have some comments on the format and timing and stuff at the appropriate time.
Okay. Vice Chair Fowler, are you okay with, would you like to go Monday or Wednesday?
Either day is good. You know, we just have to, Eric is going to have to, probably knows from tracking the viewers, when is the best time when it comes to airing a, you know, a live presentation like this? And what is the attention span of the audience? What is common? What is the timeframe? And, you know, the attention span and being able to take in information, that's the other thing. And then the other may be that is there a way, are we going to be showing like the presentation on, on the screen like we have right here? And are we going to be able to link it to a website and say everything you're saying, you're seeing here? And if you are calling in, go to this website and this is what we will be covering. And so, I think that something like that would be really good. And then how are the towns, how do we inform the, our towns and cities and other organizations? And I guess that's already been planned out and you all are very good at that. But those are, those are just some of the thoughts I have. And I think the line is really good. I know that we get a lot of questions on. I know that we get a lot of questions on, you know, rental assistance, you know, everything that is here, so I think it's really good. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Great. Supervisor Ryan?
Yeah, Wednesday sounds good. It makes sense to go after the governor, although, you know, there will be a component there of, we may have to sift through, sift through the information that's provided, you know, to determine, you know, what is our next role associated with that. We may or may not have some of those questions answered, but it still makes sense that there are more unknowns prior than after we hear from what the governor does. And yeah, he may lift some restrictions, but if he's going to implement associated with testing, it begs for the question of, is he going to keep certain pieces of the emergency in place? So all in all, you know, Wednesday does make sense. If it were like 6 o'clock, you know, bump it a half an hour earlier, that would be, that would help a little bit. You get people that start to hit their own fatigue level, not just me, but others out there. Monday, along that line, you know, my, what I've been watching is that it's a similar dynamic to Friday. People come back and, you know, if they're, even if they're working from home, they're still in a recovery from the weekend, so to speak. And so Wednesday would be when people were probably be more apt to touch on us. But I think Lena makes some pretty good comments related to when's the best audience, that kind of thing. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Thank you. So Eric, that's the conversation. I want to, I think, I think it's absolutely right, I mean, in terms of the length of a meeting and people's ability to really focus in on that. So trying to maybe shorten it so that it's not the full hour and a half. I mean, obviously, it looks like we're trying to reserve 45 minutes for questions, which I think is great. And again, like having more time for questions, because I think that's what people have been craving, is just that interaction to be able to ask questions. So as long, if we can, we definitely reserve 45 minutes or even more, that would be great. Supervisor Babbitt, you said you had some, some input in terms of the nuts and bolts of the meeting, the structure of it?
Yeah, thanks, just very quickly. So, you know, here's what, I really appreciate Chairwoman, your comments right now, because they feed into mine, you know. So often, I hear back from people on presentations that government or agencies put out, it's just a bunch of talking heads up there, and there's not a meaningful opportunity. What people want right now, in my estimation, is not only strong, competent leadership, they also want the ability to feel like their questions matter. So I completely agree on the air, on the short side of the presentation, and keep questions long, that period long, and maybe it's not broken up in such a formatted way. I will tell you, on my weeklies, which seem to go incredibly well, I use StreamYard. Questions come in, we can see them out. This product does not, is not a good interactive piece. StreamYard is free, we work, it uses, multiple people can come in. That's really, really important. And I, and I will say this, is that I don't think it should be, I think the, if the electeds are here to be that face to some degree of leadership, I think we should be some of those presenters. I don't think we should have lots of staff presenting, and then each board member go. I think that will just be too burdens, too long and too talking headish. And so however that works is fine, but, you know, that's, those are the comments, and my experience over doing a number of weeks of this presentation is that live, interactive, not pre-programmed question and answer is what provides the vehicle for people to feel heard. And when we try and preempt their questions too much, or whether we take too much of their time up before we give them the space for us to hear from them, it doesn't work quite as well. So those are my, those are my observations.
Great. Thank you. Others in regards to just kind of procedurally, or how the meeting should go? Okay, well, we'll work on taking all that we've heard and revising the agenda. Yeah, I definitely agree. And some of the information, if we're just going to touch on it very briefly in an attempt to shorten the actual talking heads part of it, we could, we can mention it, and then we can refer to where it can be found on our website. I think that was really, that was really great, Vice Chair Fowler, about having one, you know, repository for the information on the website, having it so it's ready to go Wednesday, so that we can say all the information is here in this one place, so that then we can mention the information at the meeting, but then say, go to the website, and there could be, you know, the resource list, there could be the county services available, there could be, you know, highlights of the NAU presentation, which I know is already on there, but I mean, if we're going to highlight it, the highlights that we're going to have. I mean, we could have all of that, the frequently asked questions could be on there, and that would really diminish the time that we're going to spend on explanation of all of that. We can, we can provide a short snippet to, for folks, and then we can direct them to, to where the full information can be found. So we will work on that. Oh, go ahead, Supervisor Ryan.
Yeah, actually, the FAQs, I think we could really work on that, because there are a lot more that come in beyond this, you know. Part of it's about testing, part of it's about, you know, what are these alternative sites? You know, so we've gotten a whole series of questions that could, you know, be like we've done with other scenarios, that could be developed and kept there and then updated as they go along. But, you know, I see why it's the top 10. You don't want to oversaturate, but there might be a go-to for some of the lesser questions on that.
Yeah. Absolutely.
This is Lena again.
Sure, go ahead.
This may be just one of many that we do, and what is the most pressing questions right now that people need to know? And in the future, maybe the week after or two, the next phase comes in. And I think that the main thing is for people to know where to access some of these information. That might be something to consider.
That's great. Okay. So Eric and Lucinda, do you have what you need?
Yes, I'm, I think we've gotten great feedback, and, I mean, I think we could streamline this and frankly, you know, reduce it to an hour or so, back to that, you know, attention span and opportunity, and really focus in maybe with an intro from the chair that highlights what are the resources that are on the webpage, how to link to those. My sense is there probably still need to be some conversation, some discussion about the reopening, depending upon what comes out of the governor's announcement, as well as the board review next Tuesday, discussion about that. But then we could move the FAQs to that as well, to an on, you know, online mechanism. So, and then just really have it be that open forum. I do think that we want to make sure that whatever mechanism that we use, that we do have the opportunity to manage the interaction still, so that if we get inappropriate or racist behavior or comments, that we can quickly remove that person from the process, so that we don't end up supporting, you know, inappropriate behavior. So, but beyond that, you know, I think we could have a really good forum, so.
Madam Chair and members, I think we have great feedback, and we can move forward on that planning, yep.
All right. So we have what you need.
Yep, on this one. I'm going to scroll down here, and we have also listed an internal town hall on Monday. This is much like a virtual all-hands meeting at 10 o'clock on Monday morning, in conversations with the manager. Lucinda would moderate this event, had the chairwoman just doing a welcome, not just, but being a part of a welcome, and then talking about things relational to the internal messaging and issues of the, of the organization. I don't know that all the board needs to be involved in this, but I don't want to just disregard that and bring it to you and make sure you're aware, and get any feedback you have. Again, lots of, lots of topics we're hearing from employees, from what I'm gathering from talking with the management team, but want to make sure that you have an opportunity to opine on this one.
Thank you, Eric. So let me ask members of the board, do you have anything you'd like to share with Eric in regard to this meeting, which would be internally focused?
I'll just add real quick, I'm glad we're doing it. It's a piece, sometimes we're so focused on making sure we're updating community, that we have to pause and remember, we need to share the communication with those within the organization. Often, our employees out in the community are actually emissaries on behalf of the county, and the more they know in using these opportunities, the better it is as well.
Great. Others?
Go ahead, Supervisor Babbitt. Unfortunately, we can't hear you.
I'm not trying to speak.
Supervisor Archuleta, Mr. Babbitt said he was not, did not have any comments.
Thank you very much, Eric.
This is Lena.
Yes, go ahead, Vice Chair Fowler.
Thank you. Madam Chair and team, I think this is very important. And, you know, one of the thoughts I have is that maybe there needs to be an update from the whole, some of the things that we are looking at, and, you know, I know that, and again, I guess this can be like maybe the next or something, and just really think this is important. What was that?
Vice Chair, this is Liz. Would you be so kind as to run the meeting for the next 10 minutes? I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay.
I need to step over just for a moment.
I'd be happy to do so, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on this?
No. Supervisor Fowler, Vice Chair, I'm fine. Thank you.
So Eric and Lucinda and team there, are we thinking that this will be just this Chair Archuleta and not the full board on this? What are you, what are you thinking?
So Madam, Madam Vice Chair, right now, it is simply Chair Archuleta. Certainly, I, I don't know that you would need a full board meeting or a full complement on the board members, but I don't want to say that that's my decision. I don't know if the manager or Lucinda or Joanne have anything to add to that, but, you know, we think we can, we can handle it as a management team, was our initial draft at this, but certainly, if the board wants to be involved, we will reformat and make that a possibility.
Madam Chair, this is Joanne. I think, you know, what I see this internal town hall, I see it as an opportunity to get input from our internal constituency to bring to the board for the discussion on Tuesday. So I mean, I think it's, you know, it's Supervisor Archuleta providing some kind of intro comments on what the board's looking at, and then going through these items, and then getting some input from our internal staff. So that's the way I see it, and I think the agenda looks good. All of these items are ones that have come up repeatedly, the county reopening planning, we're kind of in the, in the midst of all of that, but everything on there looks great and very relevant to everything we're hearing.
It is a really good agenda, and I'm really happy that you are working on this. So are there any other comments on this particular item? Okay, here in none. Eric, you have anything else to add on your report?
We have lots more, Supervisor. So I will pull up, what's on your, your screen right now? Chairwoman Archuleta asked us to draft a letter to Acting Superintendent Mary Riser, I believe it's Riser, at the Grand Canyon National Park, just thanking her in response to the thank you letter she sent to you for their partnership in the process of closing, and now in the partnership in the process of a phased reopening that they are looking at. And so I was asked to bring this to, letter to the roundtable today, just to see if there's any issues with the basic, you know, thanking, and again, reaffirming the value of the park and that we want to be partners as they go forward into what is a phased reopening.
Thank you, Eric. Are there any comments on this particular letter that is going to be sent to the Grand Canyon National Park Acting Superintendent? Here in none. Eric, go to your next item.
Okay. Supervisors, you will, I think, may have noticed some emails that are coming in, and I'll just pull one up here on my email, so what, you're going to see it pop in to your screen. This is from NACO. There is a new bipartisan letter going on to encourage leadership to provide direct aid to county governments in the next coronavirus package. This is for the House of Representatives. I have Julian on my team drafting a letter right now to go out later today, should you all approve, to all nine congressional members, asking them to sign on to this letter. NACO is making this request, you'll see it in your emails if you haven't seen it already. The deadline to sign on is Thursday, so we'd like to get this out tonight, and it would come under Chairwoman Archuleta's signature, so I wanted to make sure there was no fundamental disagreement. We view this as part of what we've been talking about, but didn't want to run it by the board.
I'm very happy that we're doing a letter to support this. We have received a number of requests through our various committees that we serve on, so I think that's really important. Thank you. Are there any comments on this letter that will be sent out tonight?
Yes, it's consistent with what we need to do.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Supervisors. Okay, Eric?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to just switch back to the camera here, so hopefully you can see me. What I want to let you know is a couple things. One, so on this letter, Craig does have it, he is talking with the Executive Committee of CSA about writing an op-ed, which we would amplify and support on calling on Congress to provide direct and flexible funding to counties as first-line responders. We've talked about that, and we thought that was a great comment to be done, and especially given the geographic representation of our leadership at CSA. And so wanted you to be aware of that. On the federal side, we, obviously, I think all of you have seen the news articles about the disagreements between some Senate Republicans and House Democrats working on COVID-4 or cares 2. And we continue to work on those. Bob and Anna continue to be at people's ears, and we'll keep pounding the drum as we move forward. So that's, that's my federal update, before I give just a brief, oh, excuse me, one more thing, and I'll share this, sorry. We did receive word that the Association of General Contractors did, is putting together a essentially group of concerned, coalition group, concerned organizations calling for infrastructure funding from the federal government. Craig is running that down to see, make sure the aims and purposes would meet what we do here locally as county governments, probably will, but just wanted you to be aware, we'll be passing information. probably will, but just wanted you to be aware, we'll be passing information along about that barring any major structural problems with different missions and goals from the participants. So I'll stop there on federal funding and issues and before I just briefly talk about the state.
Are there any questions up to this point on the federal funding and issues with the, right now?
Just a comment, Madam Chair. Eric, the RTAC is going to have a meeting this week also, similar type idea, but just a heads up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So Eric, I know that the, there was a, I remember an email that came out asking people to apply for, it's open season for committees to cert, you want to serve on different committees.
Yep, so the, the NACO Presidential Appointment Portal is now open. So I want to be very clear, this is not just to be a member of, as I am, of Finance, Pension and Intergovernmental Affairs. This is if you want to be a Vice Chair or Chair of a committee, serve on the NACO Board, be a Vice Chair or Chair of RAC, other types of those committees. So things that the President has to appoint you for. We are willing to help you put those applications together. We'll continue to check in with you. Of course, from our world here, we do have some members that are in those, those leadership roles. So we want to make sure if you want to continue, that we turn things in timely and help you with that. Also, just to bring up in that, this is not confirmed. I just want to be very clear, this is not confirmed, but it seems as if NACO is preparing to be, to not have a full-on conference this year, quite likely virtual operations given COVID-19. That is not confirmed. That is my best gathering of intelligence about things. So I just want to be very clear with you, but I think it is safer to say than not, that we will not need to travel to Orlando for the annual conference.
So Eric, is that confirmed?
Not confirmed.
Just kidding, just kidding.
Just want to make sure everyone gets it so I don't get quoted in the next counties' meeting that Eric Peterson said so.
Yeah, last comment Supervisor Babbitt said is he isn't going to make a comment. Oh my gosh. Madam Chair, can you get control of this meeting?
I think Supervisor Babbitt already posted it on Facebook.
Are there any other comments to this? Okay, and we shall all apply to be a president or a vice president of some sort. All right, thank you so much, Eric, on that. Are there any other updates?
So just a brief update on state actions, Madam Chair. So I will be sending out JLBC as I sent out last week, a grant portal website from our roundtable on COVID-19 funding. JLBC has released some other more descriptive details about what's coming in on federal side to the state, which is helpful for the task force and for your information. I'll be getting that out to you. It just came out today. If anyone here wants to play a betting man since Vegas is closed with me, we can take bets on what the legislature is going to do. There is still no word. If they plan to reconvene this coming weekend, weekend or not, the House, the US House, has pushed back their date of reconvening at least one week and will not come back next week as they planned to. So they are heeding the caution of reassembling in person in terms of a public health caution. Again, the legislature could meet virtually, but as of right now, they have not indicated their plans. So we're sort of in the same limbo spot. And just had a quick conversation with a bunch of the county lobbyists. Everyone's asking everyone else what they know about what is going to happen. No real confirmation of what the agenda will be when they do come back. So just wanted to keep you all in the dark, the same amount I am, so.
We love being in the dark these days. Okay, are there any questions or comments on this? Okay, seeing, hearing none. Eric, you have anything else? Is that?
Well, no, I, I, the only thing I have is, Mr. Parks, you asked for more time to look over that land and water conservation funding letter from the Mountain Pact. And so I did want to resurface that. Again, that was a request to support LWCF funding in COVID 4.0 or CARES-2, wanting to make sure that was brought back to your attention. I think, you know, there is time to sign on and it seems that they're taking more individual signatures. So we could have four, we could have five, we could have three, whatever the choice may be. I just wanted to make sure I didn't lose track of that for you.
Thank you, Eric. I did, I did take and look at that pretty carefully and I, I'm not in favor of signing a letter to that effect because that organization has not been favorable to agriculture and that is one of the, my, my drumbeat. Things that I, that I really feel strongly about is agriculture and, you know, agriculture doesn't have much of a voice. This, this group is primarily for cities and towns and sometimes, sometimes those, those organizations are not as favorable to, favorable to agriculture as they could be. This one is one of those. And so thank you for, for allowing me to get a second look at it, but I really don't want to be part of signing any letter to that effect, giving them full fun. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Parks. Eric, you have anything else?
No, I will, you all have that email and I will recirculate it. If you wish to sign individually, you can, but I heed that and I will move forward. I resubmit it all to you for that, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing none, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is an update from our county manager, Jimmy.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and members. As was stated earlier, I wanted to clarify that starting next Tuesday, May 5th, for our virtual BOs meetings, we will be going to Zoom. So again, that, for our meeting next Tuesday, May 5th at 10 o'clock, we will be doing it by Zoom. Eric is going to get some additional information out to you. Obviously, the, the link and the call in number, the clerk's office will make sure that's on the agenda, but there will be some tutorial for you all by Eric and his team before Tuesday, May 5th.
Mr. Manager, just real quick on that. So just so everyone, all the board members know, Zoom will be very, very similar to what you see when you attend the CSA meetings. It's the same platform. So think of the things you click when you're in the CSA meetings. That's what we're talking about in terms of a technology platform, so.
Eric?
Thank you, Eric. So we do have a gender review tomorrow at 10:00. Currently, from, again, Tuesday, May 5th at 10:00. We do have a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month consent and action items for consideration. We'll have a COVID update and roundtable in the morning. And then we, as stated earlier, we plan to come back at 1:15 for a follow-up budget discussion. Again, that's at 1:15 on Tuesday afternoon, the 5th. Following that, reiterate, we are planning for additional budget conversations on Tuesday, May 12th, from 9:00 to noon. Reminder, there is a regular board meeting that evening at 6:00, where we do have two public hearings. One for Lake Ranch, excuse me, Forest Lake Ranches of Mogi on Rim and Lake Powell Townhomes. Staff has informed us that neither of those at this point have controversy associated with them, but that will be for the evening meeting on the 12th. And then we'll come back the morning of Wednesday, the 13th, for 9:00 to noon budget conversation with, with an ask of protecting 1 to 5 that afternoon in case we need additional time for additional discussion on the budget. Chair Archuleta, Supervisor Babbitt, Marie West-Deason and I had a meeting at Hotel Aspen yesterday. I've sent out some, some, some brief notes to you all from that meeting, but out of that, Marie is working on some options, both there and potential other locations that she'll be bringing forth, bringing back to us for, for consideration. Yesterday morning, I sent out a path forward email to the elected official leadership team, which asking for essentially a plan for reentry when appropriate. Let me stress, that's when appropriate. This is simply to get the departments thinking about their plan. They are submitting those and actually we've got some great feedback from departments so far in them thinking in this space on how they will reenter a more normal work environment moving forward. So we will be, Joanne is helping to coordinate that response and we'll be bringing that back to you all once we have some additional information. But we have asked for at least their initial responses this week. We are, as you know, and I did send an email earlier today, we are, as, as we all know, waiting on action by the governor. So we will be in touch with you all moving forward to see where we're at and we can cross that bridge at that time. But the current executive order, the stay-at-home order, I'll call it, does expire on Thursday of this week. Madam Chair, that's all I had for an update. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Jimmy, are there any questions or comments?
Madam Vice Chair, I did forget one thing. I'm sorry for the evening meeting of the 12th. In addition to the two public hearings that I stated, Joanne Keane is working with Sue Brown on facilities master plan, King Street campus update. So we do anticipate that the evening of the 12th, along with the two public hearings. Thank you.
I now, I now open it, open for discussion right now to the board of supervisors. Okay, we have no questions or comments. We're going to move on to roundtable and I will recognize District 1 Supervisor Babbitt.
Sorry, here I am.
Great.
So for me, Madam Chair, I don't have much. I wanted to, I just did have a follow-up and it's a question and a comment on Eric. So it's my understanding, Grand Canyon National Park submitted their reopening plan to Interior. Do we have any sense, and that was what the superintendent passed out, do we have any sense of that trajectory and timing? I think it was to get sent to Interior today. Do we know that?
That is my understanding, but it is a relatively uninformed understanding. I don't have any hard confirmation that that is what is happening.
Okay. And then other than that, Madam Chair, I just wanted, you'll see it in a notice, but much of the museum fire closure area has been lifted and that's really good news to get folks up, up there. I mean, it's pretty impacted, but that's, that's at least progress. I was up there and that watershed is in its early stages of recovery up there. So thank you.
Thank you. We will, Supervisor, District 3 Supervisor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to note, Madam Chair was texting me and telling me how special my district was earlier. So, you know, I just want to make sure you guys know that. In the meantime, though, we have voucher programs going to start for the western section of the county and that's going to be happening between May 1 and May 9 at the Williams Transfer Station. So we do our annual newsletter update and trying to get people to come together to help each other, throw a little extra in with COVID-19. But, you know, the big pieces, we're getting close to that time of year. We, we do need to worry about fires and will people clean up their property? Along that line, in, to the south, we worked a little bit together, our staff did, with Highlands Fire Department and Pine Wood Fire Department. Bear Jaw crews gave each residence 10, 10 bags, and if they wanted more, they got more, to basically rake off the roofs and, and move needles and things that might burn three feet away from their houses. And people took advantage of that and then if they would do more, please do. And so my understanding is that that one's very successful and it's getting people to really, really be conscientious about how do you protect your homes. Still, there's a long way to go, but it's, it's a really good effort that's going on. Willard Springs, for the sake of the board, we've gotten compliments on people being able to do, use that opportunity so they can eliminate their green waste. So that's, that's working out well right now. Some of the discussion that I had mentioned earlier on is there's a lot of Facebook activity and the frustration of the volume of people that are coming into the Verde area and into Sedona. There, there are becoming points of heavy congestion. So, you know, as we all know, until we get a vaccine, this is going to be a prolonged situation where we may go in and come out of opening or closing and, and what do we do and how do we address it? I'd be curious to see, you know, based on Jimmy's comments after the governor's done, where we are. Do we need to take any actions? Do we need a special meeting? I, I don't know. We all don't know, but would be curious to see where that goes. I'll be hopping in on the Verde Valley call on Friday just to see what their, where their discussions have shifted back and forth. And at that point, we'll know what has happened with the governor. So I'll see it from that perspective. Just a note, we, we just approved the funding for the drainage situation in Mountain Dale this weekend. I haven't been out for a bike ride or a run in forever, but I went out on one of my first and, and early in the morning, what was it? I think it was Sunday morning, somebody had broken all our survey stakes. So I did reach out to Lucinda just to suggest that we, we provide information to people so they see it when they're coming on the trail and understand what the project is. And, and then along that line, beef up our coordination of, we not only will have that, but we're going to have the sewer project going through to Fort Todd Hill later in the summer. City of Flagstaff's doing some urban trail activity and improvements this summer. That'll be close to the park or going into the park. So there's a whole mixture of a need for just making sure we enhance our communication. And I think we have time, but it's about that time that we probably want to get on it. And then I also noted that to Eric, and I just sent him over the information related to RTAC, RTAC will be, because the discussion is shifting into potential stimulus package or infrastructure improvements, what will that become and what are the recommendations related to that? So I'll be participating in, on one of those calls later in the week. And I think that is a, a quick summary, you know, we, again, Greg and I continue to push information out there and just check in with the community and see in what's going on, just as y'all are doing. These are, these are unique times and it's important that we're there for the sake of the community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Parks. An update, please.
Okay, how'd I do? I'm on. Okay, thank you. Finally figuring out how to work this thing. Thank you, Madam, Madam Vice Chair. I just have a couple of things. I've already mentioned, I believe, that we delivered our ambulance from Forest Lakes to Sacred Mountain Medical Services in Chuba City last week. And I wanted to again thank the Forest Lakes Fire Department and Chief Dave Rodriguez for, for the donation of that ambulance. They're very appreciative up at Chuba City at Sacred Mountain. And it's going to, it's going to come in at a, at a very opportune time for them. So thanks, Chief, and thanks to the fire department down there in Forest Lakes. We've been collecting the veterans groups here in town, John Davison of the Lance Davison Memorial High Country Stand Down and Billy Weldon of the Purple Heart Association, along with the Coconino County Republican Party and, and a lot of private citizens. Pepsi-Cola gave us an entire pallet of bottled water. And we had many, many, many donations delivered. We, it was, I had my pickup in a, in a flatbed trailer and we loaded it twice and took it out to Loop and Taloney Lake and Bird Springs to be distributed amongst the elders and, and veterans and their, and their, and the veteran spouses of, of the veterans that are gone. It was pretty heartwarming to see the outpouring of, of the hearts of, of the people that, whose hearts were touched by, by this great, I guess I'll call it a disaster that has overcome the Navajo people with this COVID virus. They've, they've really had terrifically hard times out there and, and quite a few people are not going to be around to enjoy their, their relatives any longer because they're gone. That brings up another thing that I kind of just have to say. I've been thinking about this for a while. I was on a hate crimes discussion with Supervisor Fowler a week or so ago. And none of us likes hate. Hate is a bad thing. It can't, there's nothing constructive about it. We had an incident at Page. Supervisor Fowler knew the, the man that, that did this. He was, he was, it was well known that he was mentally ill for a long time. This one mentally ill man put hateful threat against Navajo people on Facebook. I'm disturbed by this because one mentally ill person can cause so much heartache for so many. That's the way hate crimes are. It could have been worse. It could have been horrible if he'd actually followed through on his threats. So I want to thank the Page Police Department for picking that man up so quickly and getting him off the street, getting him into, into a jail cell so that he couldn't follow through on that. But the, the thing that I would like to say is it's been my, my pleasure to, to see an outpouring of, of support and help and willingness to help Navajo people at this time that, that is so difficult for, for the Navajo Nation. I think this needs to be brought forth that hundreds and even thousands of non-Navajos are stepping up to support Navajo Nation. This is from their hearts. And so I want to ask Supervisor Fowler and, and anybody else that, that, that can, can convey this message that, that one act of hatred doesn't mean that, that a majority of people don't have a great deal of friendship and feeling for, for Navajo people. I know I do. Some of my best friends live out there on Navajo and, and I, I go to church with them. I, I, anyway, we're all in this together. So let's all, let's all be together on this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Parks. And I will deliver my update now from District Five. We are, we still participate on a daily basis with Chuba City Command Center, which is a sub from the Navajo Nation, Winderock area, and participate in the Western Navajo chapter calls as well. And just the other day, I want to thank Supervisor Archuleta, Supervisor, and actually our county manager and all those that were on the call. We have, we had a number of really amazing team that participated in our call on homeless. People that were, that are homeless, that was the issue. We had the Flagstaff Shelter Services, Catholic Charities, Northern Arizona United Way, Northern Arizona Veterans Resource Center, Native American Community Action. Mayor Evans was there, was on the call as well. Flagstaff Indigenous Initiative, Chuba City Regional Healthcare Corporation, Coconino County Health and Human Services, Mayor, Mayor Levi Tappett from Page. And we were all on the call to, with the Western Agency Council, which is the 18 chapters on the western side of the Navajo Nation. Of those 18, 13 of them are within Coconino County. And we did a presentation on the homeless and the network that services that is provided, the network that is set up here. And it was really, really good. We've been having really good comments that came back saying that it was, it was very educational. And Jimmy, you delivered how the county, how local government works with nonprofits. And that, that really helped set the stage. So I just want to thank you for that. We were also, we also had a form on hate crimes. And that was also another one that was very educational. It was well received. It was Facebook Live. And it was actually just an educational piece that we did. Chris, my, by clan, younger brother, Chris Deschetney organized the forum. I understand there'll be future forums and that was on the 20th. And that was, that was really, really good. People were very, are very appreciative of the board taking action and approving the proclamation to stand against hate crimes and speech and on behalf of everyone, just not Native Americans. But, you know, we always take a stand against that. And that was really well received. So I just want to thank the board and our staff again. We just, I just got off the, I met with the Glen Canyon National Recreation Area partners. We had a meeting from Utah to five counties and Navajo Nation and all the concessionaires. So they're talking about reopening. The park is still closed, but the governor from Utah saying that start preparing to reopen and especially the boat ramps locally. The local boat users can use the, over the weekend. And well, now they can, they can use the boat ramp. They, they have registered, there's about 500 of them have registered from 20-mile radius of the lake at Lake Powell, and that's at Wailepe. So today it was really just to find out where people are with the reopening and Utah counties from Wayne County, Kane County, San Juan County, all of them, Garfield County, they all wanted, they want to have the ramps open and the park open. And we do want to have that open from Coconino County, but I did shared our, the study that was shared with us from NAU, the epidemiologists, that's a tongue twister for Navajo, their study. And also the county, the, the impact, economic impact that we are looking at as well. And so we are all, the concerns happen, the readiness of the park, the, they don't have the staff that they should have right now because they don't, they haven't been able to hire. So the staff are still not there. They don't have the protective equipment as well. They have ordered those. Really looking at the wastewater operation, employee housing, preparing for the law enforcement and making, making sure they take all measures to protect the, the staff as well as the public that do visit. Airmark is saying that they may be opening and providing some safety equipment for visitors that do come. And so they're trying to figure out what kind of measures that would be. Navajo Nation is going to have and reported that it would have another lockdown. Navajo Nation is really, their word of caution was, their word was to make sure all cautions are taken because once the, the lake and everything, all the access is open again, there'll be clusters of people along the lake as, when people are able to come in and that social distance may not be observed. So just like Grand Canyon, I think that all the agencies, just as we are from the county, what does it mean to reopen and what are some of the things we need to think about? You know, employees can decide not to come back to work because they, their children are at home and the schools are closed. So they can decide they're not, they don't, they can decide they're not going to come back to work because of that. Or they have an elderly at home and they cannot come back and forth and not being able to, making sure their family are safe. So those are things that I brought up to them. And so the discussion is going to continue. This is one, this is just the first meeting that they've had. We'll have other meetings that will be coming up. So, and then we, our, let me see, our staff are good, Stephanie and Miranda. And Miranda continues to do taxes for people that is, so in a safe distance and making sure that everything is good. So those are things that we are working on, so right now. So thank you.
Vice Chair Fowler, I do not see Chairwoman Archuleta on the call at this time.
Okay, she did say that she was taking longer than expected. So are there any other comments? Because we are now at the end of our board meeting agenda. Okay, with that, I believe we will, we conclude our meeting and we shall adjourn. Thank you so much and thank you to our staff and everyone. Stay home and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you.